Hi, everyone. Welcome back to the Committee of the Whole on Tuesday, April 23rd. I'm Councilor Chris Peddickel, Acting Mayor and therefore chairing this meeting. We have a slight amendment to the agenda, just so I can talk about School District 48's Wildfire Inquiry Project Forum. This is something I attended last week as Acting Mayor. It was held in Whistler for the whole school district, kids K to 12. And I just wanted to take five minutes to highlight some of the things that kids had to say because we are talking about youth engagement and I think a lot of the points the kids had to bring up are very relevant to a number of our discussions. So, I've got some notes here on my mobile device. People will permit me to look at that. The one comment was that we should be proactive and evacuated. We have to go that route. And when I asked, you know, what their sense of a reasonable evacuation period was, they thought, you know, a day would be reasonable if you had to evacuate. And, you know, being away from home for a week would be a pretty extreme situation from their perspective. So, it gives us that perspective of, you know, what kids are thinking and what a forest fire might mean to them. There was a lot of concern about the impact of forest fires on animals, both wild and pets, and a lot of kids had solutions for keeping animals safe and so on. At the same time, I remember them also recognized the regeneration benefits of a forest fire. A lot of concern with public smoking, smoking in parks, trails in the woods, and pretty strong support for it being banned. There was also, you know, some of the kids brought up the idea of regulation and where people should or shouldn't have campfires and that kind of thing. And when I pushed, the sentiment seemed to be that there's a lot of opportunity and education of people only knew better, they would behave better. And while there was support for regulation, that didn't seem to be their real go-to solution. There was a perception that if we had more cheaper designated camping, we could better manage fire risk from camping and have better opportunity to provide education around our expectations with fires and what people do when camping. And they also commented that if there was better public transit to and from public camping sites, that would help things as well. So, they really wanted to see us focus more public transit on the camping sites we wanted to see. There was a suggestion about a good camping site in Brackendale, but I didn't get clarity on where, except that is. Some students said they were going to send us some emails and letters, so I'm hoping they will do that and point us in the right direction. Mamplum River area was mentioned as a problem area from their perspective, but maybe someone influenced by a particular teacher who is seeing those impacts. The Cultural Journey students had a really interesting couple of projects about the fact that trains cause 2% of wildfires. And while that may seem small, it's still a pretty big number, and most of those fires happen sort of way off in the bush where it's hard to react and they can have a pretty big impact in urban centers. There's not as much flammable stuff along the track, so that was quite interesting. They had ideas on how to mitigate that, mostly technological ideas. Brackendale had these fire safety pamphlets, and they printed off tons and tons of these, and they were wondering if there was some opportunity for us to help them distribute these. So, you may want to have a look at that. There might be some copyright issues with some of the pictures, but there's some good advice in there. There's some discussion about different plants and how they can cause or help prevent fire, and discussion about how we might want to mandate or at least educate people on what plants to use where and when. It was interesting, a number of them identified climate change as an underlying factor, but none of the groups that I saw talked about tackling climate change as a way to deal with a forest fire. They were very much more focused on seeing more direct things they could do to deal with the risk they're facing. And the one piece I couldn't get a good sense of is how sort of day-to-day worried the kids are and how abstract this sort of idea of forest fire was. And that's something I would like to, Doug, more, is really sure of a safe way to do that with them. So, it was really fantastic though to see the kids just so engaged and, you know, made me reflect a lot about, you know, talking about how can you engage your kids better? And this seemed to work really well where they kind of, the whole concept was, they were given the topic of wildfire inquiry, but then it was left up to them what piece of that they looked into and how they dug into that. And then to have the opportunity to go and listen to what they found out was a really good way to have that engagement, I thought. So, it was really fantastic, and I thank them for the opportunity, and I hope we will get lots of letters and emails from them, because they have lots of great ideas and thoughts. Thank you. So, with that, I will move on to the Squamish Search and Rescue Annual Update. And I think we have, is it Ms. Latimer?
That's me.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm Acting Mayor and Council. So, I'm Megan Latimer, the Emergency Program Coordinator with all districts of Squamish. And I've got here with me Cindy Welsh and BJ Schut with Squamish Search and Rescue Society to present their annual update for you.
Thanks for having us, Mayor Council. And we haven't had an opportunity to meet or to discuss, but my name is BJ Schut. I'm the President of Squamish SAR. To my right here is Cindy Welsh. She's one of our Directors. And in the back there, we have Sue Nicholson, who's our Training Coordinator. Lori Leach is our Ground SAR Extraordinaire, and Cheryl Bass is our Treasurer. So, a few members just came over to keep an eye on what it is that we're doing here as well. Being that we haven't really met or spoke, I just want to take an opportunity to welcome you and congratulate you on your positions with council. We look forward to working with you over the next couple of years. And truly just emphasize the fact that Squamish SAR would not be able to do what we do without the support of the District of Squamish and Squamish Council. So, right off the bat, just thank you, like mostly to your previous council, but to the organization for helping us in the ways that you have helped us and provided the support you've provided over the years. So, thank you for that. In particular, we wanted to just take a second to recognize Megan, Sean Sweeney, Chief Stoner, and Natasha for the work that they did on our new service agreement. A lot of work went on behind the scenes, and a lot of effort went on behind the scenes that you may or may not be aware of, but it brought us to an agreement that is really a good, healthy stepping stone for the future. So, thank you to everybody for that. Typically, what we do is we come once a year and just do kind of like a highlight role of what is it that we did over the past year, just what is it the services of the districts provided us, what possible ways we can work together in the future. And really, it's an opportunity for you as the council to ask us questions about our organization. Feel free to interrupt, feel free to shout out, wave your hand. It doesn't really matter. We're pretty informal, so anything that you want to ask at that time, I'm okay with being interrupted. I'm okay if you just, you know, wait till the end too. It doesn't really matter to me. It's your time. We do have some slides. We've learned over the years to try and make them more exciting. We used to have lots of graphs, and Doug's rolling his eyes right now, but we started, and I'm sure Mayor Elliott as well remembers those days when we didn't really know what it was that council wanted, so we just kind of made it up as we went. So, I'm happy too to shut the computer down and just sit here and answer questions. And I, really, it doesn't matter. I'm here to really just highlight the work that our members do and highlight the incredible working relationship that we have with the district. So, however that works out is fine by me, so feel free. Having said that, we do have an agenda here. What it is that we do, where we operate, when we operate, a little bit about funding, why we do what we do, some challenges and some ways in which we hope the district can help us, who we are. Just as a quick recap, we are a registered nonprofit organization that's governed by the Societies Act. We're a community-based, 100% volunteer operation. Having said that, we do actually have two very, very part-time people that we do hire, a bookkeeper and an admin assistant, just to try and take some of the burden off the volunteers. And we operate under the guidelines of EMBC, Emergency Management BC. So, they're the ones that are responsible for when we go out, how we operate, what sort of guidelines we perform under, training standards, operating standards, those sorts of things, as well as how we recover some of our funding and some of our equipment and liability, et cetera. I'm not used to this computer. Like I said, we're 100% volunteer organization. We have 49 active members. We just are in the process of taking on some new members, would be 15, Sue, was I remembering right? Fifteen new members, which is really exciting. Sue, in particular, has done, I don't know how many hundreds of hours or how she managed to do it, but has put together a list that we'll be selecting some new members from. We have five reserve members, seven support members, members who do lots of work, but non-traditional search and rescue work. So, like Cindy, for example, leads all of our project management work, keeps us on track. We have logistics support members. Logistics support members, right. We just brought on three new, two new logistics members who come in and help us with cleaning and stocking, and during the calls, just all the sort of go-to day-to-day parts of running a call as well. So, it's actually a pretty exciting year for that.
You're an honorary member.
Oh, an honorary member. Paul Kindred.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys know Paul Kindred. Paul Kindred's one of the founding members of our team, who's our first honorary member. We have, obviously, our members have been here for a long time. Two active members, probably both of the Johns with over 30 years, two members who've been around over 25 years, and nine members who've been around over 10 years. So, the commitment of our team is just outstanding, is probably one of the things that I really am most proud about of the members. What we do, we tried to put some pictures in here to describe it. So, mountain rescue is one of our most technical disciplines. Those would be calls up in the Tattelus Range, up above Sky Pilot, those areas where it's, you know, very, very rugged, very, very difficult to get to in a SAR operation, and very technical. Helicopter rescue, as well as our longline rescue, which you guys, I know that you know because we get the calls when we're doing it at the chief, what's going on. And the helicopter rescue obviously cuts down on our response times, allows us to cover, you know, a really long distance in a short time, as well as move equipment in a really quick manner up to where we need to go. As well as we have members who are trained in a longline, which is hanging underneath the helicopter, so we could physically insert members to a very, very small area within a small canopy of trees as well if we need to. This is also used mostly for extraction. So, if we had to extract somebody who is injured or even lost or stranded somewhere, we can do that with the longline system. And although it looks dramatic and everybody thinks that it's really, really dangerous, it actually cuts down our response time. It also cuts down the number of members we need to do that response, and it's actually the opposite, it's very safe the way that it's done. We have a winter response, avalanche response team. So, these members are obviously trained in winter travel, winter survival, some members in advanced winter medicine, but most importantly, they're trained in avalanche, both travel and response. We don't do a lot of avalanche, really any avalanche responses per se, doesn't mean we won't, but we do travel through avalanche terrain a fair bit, even going up to Diamond Head. So, we have a couple of dozen members actually that are trained in that terrain as well. So, that's very helpful. The bulk of what we do, obviously, is what in our terms is ground search and rescue. And these pictures, I don't know how well it looks like up there, if we were to dim the lights. This was a horrendous night up on the chief with some people that were stranded up there. And I think we had about 20 members or so. I know that all three ladies in the back were there out most of the night in the pouring, freezing rain. It was about four degrees in pouring rain. So, it was a really long, really miserable night, and I think this picture really actually highlights what our members do on a regular basis as well. We have a Training Division and an Operational Readiness Division, so those members, I'm not really sure what the members on the right are doing, to be honest with you. I'm going to say that they're rope training, but I think they're not. But anyways, what they are actually doing is learning how to tie, and that looks like Malcolm in the middle, and Ian and Jim, how to tie somebody properly into a stretcher so that they can actually be tipped horizontally if we had to raise or lower them, say on the chief or somewhere, if we were to do a call in conjunction with the Fire Department in the smoke bluffs or an area like that, that can be, it may not look technical, but if we have to tip somebody head to toe, it's obviously a different beast than just raising them straight up. And then on the left, that's actually from a call out. I think that's the Britannia, it looks like the Britannia Fire Hall. We, again, work with many community organizations, and the Britannia Fire Department's one of them. So, I think this call was a, either a motorcycle crash or somebody that was lost in Britannia. We did a couple of calls last year, I can't remember exactly. So, we kind of took over their upstairs portion and used it as our command post for them for a couple of days, which was great. Adventure Smart, our Adventure Smart team is our prevention team, and Cheryl, behind me there, is one of our leads. In fact, Cheryl received an award from the BC Search and Rescue Association and the Province. Cheryl and, it looks like, that's Christine up there, I can't see. Yeah, Christine Strump up there as well, also received the award for delivering the most presentations to school groups of anybody in the province. And I think, and Cheryl will correct me if I'm wrong, that they delivered more programs than the rest of the province combined. So, these ladies are very talented, very dedicated, and out in every school out in Squamish. Pretty much, you can't get through elementary school without talking to Cheryl and Christine, which is pretty awesome. Their goal, in the end of the day, is to limit the number of SAR responses, you know, thinking being if we can train people to be prepared, train people what to do in an emergency in the wilderness, that it will actually decrease our call volume. Some projects that we did last year, and we wouldn't have been able to do this without the likes of Cindy and Cindy's husband, Chris, who took on overseeing these projects, but we put a rope training mezzanine. You guys probably haven't been to our base, eh? You should come. So, by all means, we can work probably through Megan and set up some dates and come and see what it is that we're actually talking about. We'll give you a tour, we'll, I don't know, give you some stickers and a hat maybe, whatever it is that you like. You can play with the ropes, you can get Jiminy in to tie you up, if you like, and raise and lower you. But one of the things that we did is build a rope rescue mezzanine in our center base. It allows our rope rescue team and our helicopter longline team to do training undercover, which, as you can imagine, particularly through, you know, the nine months of the year that it rains every day, is really, really beneficial. That picture up there used to be what's called a C-can, so a shipping container, that we converted to a base at the Stewamas Elementary School. And we've turned it into, partway into an office and partway into secure storage. And what it's going to do, and we just actually made it operational last week, is we're hoping it's going to allow our members to respond directly to the school for a helicopter response, say in the chief area or the Sea to Sky Gondola area, whereby cutting down our response times. We've got some gear there, a little bit of gear, and some radios and some gear, just warm gears for our subjects. We can have our members just descend straight to the school and have them picked up by a helicopter while the rest of the team goes to the base and perhaps the trucks and all the rest of the gear. So, we think it's going to be really successful. To be truthful, we haven't used it yet because we just finished it last week. We've put up two, well, we've put up one repeater, we're in the process of putting up a second repeater. One of the things for, I know, Doug, you've been here at this field for a while, one of the things we always talk about is our inability to communicate in the back country, and I'm sure Chief Stoner would echo this. Once we leave Squamish, there's a lot of mountains that block our radio. So, we've managed to put, with cooperation of the Gondola, a repeater station on top of the Gondola, and working with the district and also Rogers Communication, a second repeater up at the top of Dipex Hill. So, that's going to allow us to increase our communication throughout Squamish. One of the big projects, like I mentioned before, obviously, was the Service Agreement with the district and a Lease Agreement with the district. Again, Cindy took the lead on that with Megan and Sean, and it's really, I think, it's really quite exciting to move that forward, as well as working with the Real Estate Division of the district to either help us maintain where we are or look for possibly a new location for SAR. One of the things that you'll see if you come to our base is that we are growing, and our equipment's growing, and our demands are growing, but our facilities stay the same. So, we have the ability to build up and not necessarily the ability to build out. So, we're looking for where it is we can go long-term. And obviously, the way that we are funded is probably well aware through the media, one of the ways is through gaming grants. And one of the things that we applied for last year in a gaming grant and worked with the district through your buying power with your fleet division is the ability to buy vehicles. So, we're going to be buying a new, what we call a command van, a new van that's going to be built for SAR to be used as a command post, but also have the ability to move people and gear wherever it is that we need to go. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with how that works, but really, what it comes down to in simple terms is allowing us to buy a vehicle at a very, very reduced rate. So, if we didn't have that agreement with the district, that ability with the district, we'd have to fundraise for that additional, probably $15,000, $20,000. So, it's very, very significant. Thank you for that. One of the things that's interesting with our group in particular, and I think really with any of the bigger groups, Chilliwack, North Shore, Poughkeepsie, is our call volume has been spiking over the last several years. And I know you're going to ask me why, and the short answer is I have no idea, but what I think is that, hey, what's going on down? What I think is that there's just more people coming to our area. And so, when you put more people into an area, the number of calls for help are going to increase. I think it's as simple as that, but I don't have any way to actually correlate that data, but that's what I'm pretty sure of. We did 100 and, how many calls last year? 102?
104.
104 calls last year?
Yeah.
And so far to date, we're right on par with the same numbers last year. So, we don't do a lot of calls during the winter months. Most of our calls are from, say, around mid-May to mid-October, and I think we'll see that 100, call volume, top around 100 again this year. This map just breaks down our calls by month, so just...
Want me to do it?
Sure. Yeah, you made it.
Okay. I'll jump in, because it just to make, help to make sense with it. It's considered a heat map, so just kind of visually with color shows you where the big volume of activity occurs for us. So, just as a quick orientation, if you look at your left-hand side, number of years, so from 2010 down to 2018, we've got actual data by month of the number of tasks. So, we're called, we go out, we search and rescue for subjects. And it shows you that, as BJ just mentioned, sort of May to September, October is your very busy time. That's when we get multiple calls sometimes and calls throughout the weekends and during the week. Where it's a little bit more yellow or green shows less volume in those winter months. We used a linear regression analysis on a per-month basis to do the forecast that you just saw, because we're trying to get a sense like how many tasks are happening, we need to look at our membership, that kind of balancing act. The remaining forecast, the 2019 to 2022, is just that linear analysis and forecasting going forward. We'll see if this all comes true. We're tracking to that currently, but we're going to keep reporting out this type of information to you if it's helpful.
Cool. Thanks, Cindy. It's kind of a lot. Do you guys have any questions so far? Or do you want me to just keep going? I have just like another, well, eight slides? Six slides?
Yeah, maybe go through your slides and then we'll try and...
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, however it works. So, the next slide just shows our, what we call our response area, is the formal term for it. So, basically, there is a SAR team in Lions Bay, there's a SAR team in Whistler, there's a SAR team in Pemberton. We operate halfway to Lions Bay, halfway to Whistler. So, kind of Garibaldi Park would be our cutoff to the north, and Porto Cove would be our cutoff to the south. It's not entirely accurate, but that's close enough for that. When do we operate? Well, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 75 days a year. Our volunteers are on-call all day, every day. So, we don't have shifts, we don't have, you know, a dedicated team, nobody's sitting at our SAR base. What happens is that a page goes out to the entire membership, and then depending on if we need some specialty-trained members or what the needs are for that person that's injured or lost, we have the ability to customize who we call upon. But generally, a page goes out to the entire team, and whoever is available comes into the call and we formulate a plan and we go over and respond from there. Most of our callouts are rescue, whether they're injured or stranded. We don't do a lot of lost, look for a lot of lost people. The majority of our calls are actual rescues as opposed to searches, and the majority of our calls come from the ambulance service or the RCP or both. We physically have to be asked to respond. The Fire Department or the district could ask us to respond, the ambulance service or the RCP, for example, could ask us to respond. So, we don't, what's called an emergency service is we don't self-dispatch. We work under the auspice of one of these other organizations. So, funding from Squamish, the in-kind contributions of our compound, which is really our base, I'm not sure why it's called the compound, but years ago it started out being the compound but it's, that's where our base is, that's what houses our equipment and our vehicles. And that includes the operating costs of our compound, the insurance and fuel for our vehicles, and as well as an annual budget for the maintenance of our vehicles. So, that's what we negotiated with the district, and it's a really good, I think, good support that the district shows us through that. I think it would be extremely difficult for us to operate without that support from the district, just the ability to have that compound, to have somewhere safe that's looked after, we don't have to worry about, you know, seeing a hydro bill or anything like that. Everything's just taken care of, but it just takes the burden away from our volunteers, and it takes not just the burden of the work, but the burden of fundraising that would have to go into, any sort of funds to make up for that. So, again, thank you for that. Other funding is provincial. We, I'm sure you all heard that we did get at the 11th hour some funding from the province. What we ended up getting was a three-year commitment from the province, broken into three separate years. So, we have a commitment for some money for this year, next year, and the following year. We need to spend the money, at least at this point, within that fiscal year, so April to April. And that does cause us some issues in that we're not able to save that money for things like long-term planning of replacing vehicles or replacement of SAR base or additional SAR base or anything like that. So, although it's great, I can be wrong, we've got some money from the province, it's not exactly the funding model that we were hoping for. We're hoping to receive stable funding from the province that allows us to do things like capital plan management, it allows us to do long-term training initiatives and things like that. EMBC, like I said before, does provide the operational funding on the tasks, on the callouts, so any helicopter cost, anything that's broken or missing, if we needed to hire some special service, something like that, all of that's funded through the province at the time that that emergency is happening. And then gaming grant submissions, like many of your volunteer societies in Squamish, we rely on the gaming as well, which again makes for some pretty tricky accounting for us because we need to spend the majority of our operating money in order to qualify for the gaming. So, we're always kind of playing catch-up, and that's why we are really hopeful that this year, with the provincial funding announced, we're going to see stable funding that allows us to do the long-term planning that we need to. On top of that, we have, you know, obviously donations from the community. For example, the Sea to Sky Gondola gives all of our members passes for the year, and Valhalla Pier, Maria Valhalla Pier has just given us a $5,000 donation. She's actually given us $20,000 over four years, so she's given us $5,000 this year, which is amazing. And that money has come straight from purchases and people donating stuff and fundraising just within his store. So, without that community support, I think you're starting to see the picture, it would be very difficult for Squamish SAR to operate and very difficult for us to survive financially. Our members actually contribute back as well. So, our members are reimbursed meals and miles, so a little bit of money goes to each member for fuel and for lunch or dinner, depending on how long we're out for. Our members take that money and in turn donate it back to the society. So, that allows us to fund member initiatives as well. So, that's how we're funded in a broad stroke. I'm happy to discuss that, and I'm sure there will be lots of questions. What it is that we do, well, we're the sole provider for significant necessary emergency response. Anytime that the RCP, the ambulance, or even the Fire Department, if they're not able to reach an injured person or a lost person, then they call on us to assist them. Obviously, the Fire Department, we're not a 911 service, we're not a first responder service. We provide help to those first responders and able to allow, either allow them to access and transport the patient out, or allow us to go in and bring the patient out to the ambulance service or out to the Fire Department, for example. We provide help to those first responders and able to allow, either allow them to access and transport the patient out, or allow us to go in and bring the patient out to the ambulance service or out to the fire department, for example. Our members are highly trained emergency response, the provider of highly trained emergency response capabilities in areas where the RCMP, that's what I just said, and community safety of residents, visitors, and joint outdoors. So obviously, our members are interested in community safety, we are interested in the safety of the wilderness and the people that come here. And we are available to the district in an emergency response as well, or in like an evacuation, for example, if there was a flood or a massive fire, or for some reason the district decided to evacuate an area of Squamish. Squamish SAR could be called and has trained with the district in how to go about performing those evacuations in conjunction with other volunteers. Some of our challenges is our funding, which we discussed. The EMBC funding doesn't cover all of the money that we spend. So we are actually twelve or fifteen thousand dollars per year in deficit based on the task. So the money that it costs us to perform the task versus how we get funded back from the province. And what I did talk about was the, we're not able to plan long-term. That is difficult for an organization as large as us. We can only plan for 12 months at a time. And obviously, any gaming grants as well have to be spent within that. So that is a significant challenge for us. We have, like I said, we've expanded over the last few years, and our call volume has risen significantly as well as the needs of our volunteers. So the compound where we are, as great as it is, is we are outgrowing that compound as well. So we're looking for some partnership within the community to maybe have a second garage somewhere to house something. We're looking to, we were just contacted, actually, I don't, we haven't had a chance to meet with him, so I don't know what the deal is or who he is, but somebody's offered to board our boat for us, for example. So things like that, we're trying to reach out to the community, reach out, and hopefully reach out through the district as well as areas in which we can increase our real estate. And we do have a lease agreement with the district that expires in 2021. So our new agreement is for three years. We talked about what it is that we are looking for as an organization, not necessarily from the district, but I know in many areas you would may be able to help us. And that's sufficient operational funding that covers our task bus. And I know in the past that the district has helped and gone in conjunction with other municipalities to lobby UBCM, for example. I know Councilor Stoner has put a resolution forward to the Lower Mainland, I don't know what it's called, but the Resolution to the Lower Mainland Mayor's Association or something. What's it called?
Local Government Association.
Okay.
LDX.
Yeah. And so, you know, things like that where we can, you know, we know that the district is supportive, but there are ways in which the district can continue to support what it is that we need. There might be a possibility that the district has land or even knows of somebody that's a developer or somebody that has land that may be available or space that may be available, and as well as the long-term commitment to continue working together in the future is what it is that we are looking for at this point. With that, thank you. That's us in a year, it's a lot. And I saw lots of you writing stuff down. I'm happy to answer any questions the best that I can, and again, would offer our invite to you guys to come to our base and meet our members and talk to our members and see firsthand what it is that our members do and what it is firsthand that we do, not even when we responded to tasks, but the amount of work that goes into our organization on a daily basis as well.
Thank you very, very, very much. And just, we are under some time constraints, so we're hoping that we keep it to the most important questions. Councilor French?
Hope this is considered important.
Does your group meet weekly, monthly for training?
Yeah, I have a question. So we have sort of two arms, if you will. So our society, our board of directors meets every month, and then sort of one-off meetings like that to go over budgeting and funding and that sort of stuff. Our team actually trains every second Tuesday, all of our team trains, and then on the next Tuesday, our specialty team trains. So it's kind of every week training's happening, but not every week everybody's training, if that makes sense.
I was thinking it would be great for us to pop in to one of your training sessions, but Tuesdays are a little busier.
Well, we do other days too, so you tell me, Mr. French, when you want to come, and I'll make it happen.
Councilor Henderson? The Ministry of Forests and Lands is doing a Squamish Valley Recreation Use Survey and Study. I'm just curious as to whether your organization might take it upon itself to give input into an exercise like that, to deliver your experience and your recommendations?
Yeah, and I think, you know, I, there's so many acronyms that I don't want to misspeak, but I think we're involved in that. So I know that there's a couple of studies that are going on with the Ministry of Lands, and we've been contacted and participated in a couple of those. But if you know of another one, that by all means send our name forward or put our contact information forward, and we'd be more than happy to talk to them. If it's the one that I'm thinking about, it was more specific around Joffrey Parks, which is outside of what we do up in Pemberton, but there's so many of them, I don't know.
It isn't, but they're close. It's very, a parallel exercise specifically concerning the Squamish River, about the upper Squamish.
Oh, I see.
They're very similar kinds of exercises.
Yeah. And if, Councilor Henderson, if you have a way to put us in touch with them, by all means, you'd be happy to.
Councilor Harper? Thank you. When you pull up the task volume slide, I think there's interesting things there. And I know that predicting is, you know, is a challenge, but sort of post-game, that drop in 2017, did any insights sort of come from that? It's almost 15%.
No, but I thought you were going to ask me the big spike in 2011.
No, I was all prepared. But I'm just curious, because the trend is up.
No, I don't, I don't know. And part of it might be the way that we're actually recording task volume over the years as well. So we did go in 2017, 2018 to a new way of recording task volume, a much more accurate way, and so that might account for it. There's a few anomalies in there as well, where the one thing that we're thinking, and I, again, I don't know for sure, is that last year, for example, if you look at our August responses, they were down, maybe not significantly, but down, and we think that was due to the fires. Just simply not as many people out doing things.
Yeah, I see that, I was thinking rain on the right weekends or something drops down the number of people out there.
Totally, yeah. And we don't, to be honest, to start drilling down and start keeping track of that level of data is somewhat unrealistic for us as a group. Yeah. Just curious.
It's a great question. I could, we did use all the data, historical data, and we didn't shave off any outliers, but we can go back and look at that as well.
I'm just curious, because I like the educational component, trying to push down the, you know, the goal is to have less calls.
Yeah, exactly.
Obviously, so just wondering what's in the forces or if they... Thank you. Councilor Star and Councilor Race?
A huge thanks to both, everybody who's here for the presentation and for everything that you guys do. It's amazing what you guys can do and the volunteer hours that you have. I do want to go back to the resolution that we put forward for the Lower Mainland Local Government Association. I'm slowly getting my accent right. And just to confirm that, so what we have seen come forward from the province since these three years of funding, and from your perspective, that still isn't sufficient as a sustainable funding model?
For a sustainable funding model, no, but welcome, yes. So the fact is, is we got this money, it hasn't been decided how that money is going to be divided up yet. So I suspect it'll be similar to the previous three years that we saw as well. The great thing is that we got a bunch of money to do a whole bunch of really cool things. The downside is we're not able to plan that money. So if, similar to gaming, I'm not sure if you know how you see gaming works, where you have to spend it within that calendar year, we need to spend this within the government fiscal year, equal to annual. So in this year in particular, and again, I really don't want to sound like I'm whining, because I'm not, but in this year in particular, we did our budget, our budget year is January in January. So we did a budget on the basis that we were not going to receive these funds. And then on March 25th, or whatever it was, we received these funds. So it leaves us a little bit scrambling and just not having that ability to plan forward. For example, we know we're going to need a new boat, we're going to need a new truck, and we don't have the ability to save that money for us. That's the difficulty for us.
And that's super helpful. So that meeting or that conference is early May, and so it's helpful for us to know what that challenge still is.
Sure.
So that when we bring forward that resolution...
For sure.
Effectively long forward.
And Councilor, I'm more than happy to sit down with you anytime and go into any detail, open that up.
One other quick follow-up, and it's with regards to the challenge with the EMBC funding and how there's a deficit there with regards to the task or the amount that you get per task. Is that just a formula that they have on their end, and that formula is incorrect based on increased costs?
So Cindy has a much more elegant response than I do, but the EMBC task revenue costs have not, or reimbursement rates have not risen is one issue for sure. But Cindy can explain it, because it was Cindy that actually found that.
Yeah, and really, the assistance that we need is just highlighting that we need to look at what the funding is on a per-task basis. We are covering the 12,000 to 15,000 deficit with other donations from the community, and it's just time for us to go back now and talk about that. There are smaller things, there's some more administrative policy changes that are impacting us with respect to timing of bulk purchasing and higher costs of heat blankets and glow sticks and things like that. If you wanted more detailed analysis, we can happily do that for you. We just didn't bring all the detail today. But it's just time for us to do that, right? And I know it's not your responsibility, but it's good for you to know the whole story.
Thank you.
Councilor Race and Mary Elliott?
Thank you. And it's Councilor Stoner to thank you again for coming here today and for what you do and to your volunteers as well. I have been one of the people that's actually gone through that facility, and I can only tell my fellow councilors, it's very worthwhile, it was very interesting for me. And we do meet on Tuesdays, but we don't meet every Tuesday evening. And I think if I recall, we met with you at about five or six o'clock or something like that.
We did.
The afternoon daylight, something like that.
Yeah, I think, Councilor Race, what we did in the past was we hosted a sort of show-and-tell dinner at the... You know, we could do something like that for sure, absolutely. But I think what, if you wanted to meet, you know, and see the actual training, you know, there is lots of training, and Sue would be more than happy to arrange a training date outside of our regular Tuesdays, not just for you, but we actually do train on random Thursdays and Fridays and weekends as well. So there's lots of opportunities to see that as well. But I, you know, I think, you know, I'm glad to hear your comment, and I think it would be great to have your group come and just visit and see what it is that we do, and really see what it is that you provide us.
And I think, from my perspective, I mean, despite the effort you're making to reduce the number of calls, I tend to agree with your forecast, and it's just the reality of it.
They're not going to.
No, and we're facing the same thing in the regional district, and tourism marketing has been very, very successful, and now we have to deal with it, is the reality. There's a number of points up there that I think are, from my perspective, are worthwhile for the discussion.
For sure.
And so I think it's just a matter of trying to schedule that and see what can come out of that.
Okay.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Mary Elliott?
Thank you for your presentation. I've just written down a note to follow up about organizing a tour for the council. I noticed that my colleague from the SLRD, Tony Rainbow, is in the audience now.
Oh, good. I was just about to mention Tony was going to join us, so there he is.
So that's good, because I think the SLRD is part of funding SARs, and we're certainly happy to do our part.
Great.
But, you know, just to put you on the spot, Tony.
No, I'm just wondering if I should interrupt, because I just wanted to say...
You need to come to the table, because we're recording.
I'm sorry.
So just a little bit of a background, I did meet with Mr. Rainbow last week and relayed that we were coming here and that, you know, we wanted to, you know, form a similar relationship with the SLRD, which Tony took grasp on and ran with, and he actually asked, and I didn't see him here, so I didn't introduce you, if he could come and be part of the presentation. So thank you for joining us, Tony.
Just very briefly, I'm just interested in working with SAR and meeting with representatives from the Squamish Council as well to look at long-term funding and also, what would you call it, like capital, small capital funding things. We've helped a little in the past, but I'd like to have something established so that they have some confidence in it, and they're not going to come asking every year if it's there in place. So rather than just do that unilaterally with them, I'd prefer to work with the district.
That was my question, was to put Tony on the spot.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That would be easy, I turned it upside down and shook him to sleep.
But to get Mary Elliott, then you'll organize, getting together with Mr. Rainbow and...
Yes, yes.
One morning, nine o'clock in the car.
We'll talk all the way to Pemberton, we'll talk about SARs.
Excellent. I'm free to come too, if you please. We'll go to Mount Creek, though. Again, thank you for your time, and thank you for the support, and I just wanted to close by saying that we look forward to working with the new council, we look forward to helping you, helping educate you as to what it is that SAR does and our volunteers do, but we would not be able to function to the level that we do without your support. So this really can't be underscored enough. So again, thank you for that.
Thanks.
And you guys still want me to cup the mustard?
We what?
You'll be a cup of mustard.
Sorry. Want a coffee?
Sure.
Do you want to drive?
I can drive.
You'll find out.
Sorry?
Was it, that was...
Yeah. Thank you, thank you very much.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
You can do the driving, I'll just go sit up here. Snowy hell.
Are we still left?
I think so.
Yeah?
So we're on to the Integrated Stormwater Management Plan in an effort to get us back on track, time-wise, and I'm thinking we'll do next pile of break when this is completed, so. Use that bit of incentive for everyone. See if I have a meeting here or not.
Drive.
Lots of water talk in this one.
Please take it away.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Council. My name is David Olson, I'm manager of municipal infrastructure for the district, and I have Brittany Donnie from Urban Systems. Brittany is a strategy consultant with Urban Systems who helps municipalities make informed and strategic decisions about how they provide services, including how they plan for, fund, and maintain infrastructure assets. She also brings experience with Integrated Stormwater Management Planning and Water and Sewer Master Planning. Notably, she worked on the district's liquid waste management plan that was completed in 2015. So our agenda for today is to present the overall process and the key outcomes of this Integrated Stormwater Management Plan. Of note, this is the last major master plan for the engineering department in terms of looking at our key infrastructure classes. We've done sewer, water, master plans, Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, Asset Management Plan. We also have an Asset Management Plan update coming later this year, but this is really kind of the tail end of putting together over the past five to six years, all these different master plans and outcomes. Things are coming along nicely. So our presentation is going to be about 30 minutes, and we'll leave some time for questions and discussion after that. So some quick background on this plan is that the district generally had very poor information on our stormwater assets prior to engaging in this plan. We had a number of... And we initiated in January of 2018 and we've been working on this plan over the past year and three months. So today we're seeking adoption of the Integrated Stormwater Management Plan and I will hand it over to Brittany to take the rest of the presentation.
Thank you. So we have three goals for you today in terms of what we want to lead with. The first is that you understand or the council understands what the outcomes of the Phase One Integrated Stormwater Management Plan or the ISMP are, that you understand how they will be used by the district to improve stormwater service delivery and asset management, and as David said, that the ISMP is adopted. So I wanted to cover off a couple of definitions first, just because this project was so large in its scope. So first of all, Integrated Stormwater Management is an approach to managing stormwater through integrated decisions. So considering land use regulations, capital planning, O and M, and public education and outreach. And it's really about balancing what are largely competing or often competing objectives around things like environmental protection, public safety, and community development. So in developing an ISMP, all of these things are taken into account when deciding what that way forward is. And then you leverage things like regulations and land use decisions to achieve those objectives. And then asset management is an integrated process of making decisions about your assets, both engineered and natural, I'll get into that, that are informed by lifecycle costs, risk, and service levels. And the overall goal of asset management, why you do it, is to provide sustainable service delivery and ideally sustainable across multiple bottom lines. And the reason that I cover this here is that we developed the Phase One ISMP with both of these lenses in mind. So we we touched on both the environmental protection aspects and public safety of what we would in developing a typical ISMP, but it was really asset management based. So we really pulled in that sustainable service delivery aspect as well. And so these two really broad lenses covered the scope of the ISMP. So I'm going to walk you through it here just because it was so large. We we framed the scope here around certain questions that we sought to answer. As David said, there were quite a few gaps in information and data and that sort of thing, and this this project really sought to fill in those blanks. So the first one that we looked at through a baseline assessment was how are the district's stormwater management and asset management practices now and how can they be improved? And then also what watersheds require a catchment specific ISMP. So as David said, there are quite a few outdated master drainage plans. Things have really changed in terms of practices nowadays, and so we wanted to look at which areas require some more attention. We then looked at what level of service the district aims to provide and we framed those in terms of goals for stormwater service delivery. And they are meant to guide the catchment specific ISMPs and also communicate to the public what they can expect in terms of stormwater services. We then developed an asset management investment plan. You'll also often hear it just called an asset management plan, which answers questions like what assets do we have, what's their value, and what is needed to, what's needed in terms of investment to replace them. We also conducted a natural asset valuation to look at the value of the district's natural assets, the stormwater service that they provide, and how they can be included in planning processes. So land use planning decisions, your asset management and Integrated Stormwater Management Planning. And then we developed an environmental monitoring program, which answered questions like how can we measure and track watershed health over time and the effectiveness of the district's stormwater management practices. And we developed an ISMP Terms of Reference and Process Guide for those catchment specific ISMPs because this one was higher level and district wide in its scope. So we defined the scope of those catchment specific ISMPs. And then lastly, we looked at options for increasing revenues for stormwater service once we had looked at what that funding gap was, and we did that through a funding review. We engaged the community stakeholders through a workshop early in the project and through a public survey at the tail end of the project. And then we outlined guidance for how the district should implement catchment specific ISMPs, the monitoring program, and other recommendations that fell out of the work in a summary report. And so the plan itself, this Phase One ISMP, that level of service framework is what informed the goals that are set out in the plan. The ways that the district can improve are the recommendations that came out of everything. And then it also includes an implementation plan, like a specific timeline for implementing those those recommendations. So what I'm going to do next is walk you walk council through the each of the outcomes from this Phase One process, just because each of them informed ultimately the content in that Phase One ISMP. So first of all was the level of service framework. And again, what it does is establish goals to guide how stormwater service is provided and how stormstormwater is managed at the district. It sets a common sort of foundation for those catchment specific ISMPs. So this was actually something that was really good about the district's approach here with this asset management based and district wide ISMP was to establish a common framework and goals for those catchment specific plans. Often what municipalities do is develop a watershed based or a catchment based ISMP and then a few years later do another, and there's often a lot of repeat work involved there. And so this was really meant to do all of that district wide work upfront and then establish a common way forward for them, recognizing that there's going to be some nuance and differentiation between those catchment specific ISMPs, but this was that that common umbrella framework first. And also what this level of service framework does is communicate what customers can expect in terms of of how stormwater service is provided. So the framework itself includes 10 specific goals for stormwater management. I haven't listed them up here, but the spirit of them or generally what they cover are these topics here. So outlining direction for and clarity around protection of private property and nuisance flooding, expectations of new developments, so not not specific technical requirements, but just that, you know, they should minimize impacts to the environment, you know, that sort of language. Environmental protection, the operation and maintenance of public infrastructure, and also outlining expectations for how the district responds to stormwater management issues, recognizing that staff hear about it quite a bit. So again, this this served this framework here as setting common goals for these catchment specific ISMPs. Next, I'll walk you really briefly through the summary of the baseline assessment. So we looked at two things through this assessment. The first was an assessment of the district's stormwater and asset management processes and practices. And we used a commonly used assessment tool in the industry called Asset Smart as a framework for the assessment. And so using that framework, we look at these four key areas here. One is the an understanding of the district's assets, so what they are, different attribute information, how much they're worth, information used to make decisions, so looking at the sort of policies and bylaws that are in place, master plans to help inform decisions. We also looked at funding levels and practices, and we also looked at people capacities, so things like teamwork and understanding of council and the public of stormwater and asset management issues. And what we found at a very high level here is that, well, one, as David said, the district really needed to improve its asset inventory, and we made a lot of progress on this through this project here, and I'll get into a little bit more detail on that when we get into the asset management investment plan, but really big headway on the inventory. We found that the district needs to improve the information that is used to support decisions, so things like development, how stormwater is managed, how resources are allocated, information could be improved there. And generally that the district needs to move towards more sustainable, especially financially sustainable service delivery, and I'll cover that on the funding review. And then lastly, you know, and this is one of the reasons why we're here today, was that we saw a need, especially with the new council, to build awareness amongst council and the public of stormwater management issues, the importance of good asset management practices, and sustainable funding. And then the other key focus area of this baseline assessment that we did was looking at stormwater issues. So we basically did a sort of high level scan of what we would typically do as part of a catchment specific ISMP, so looking at district wide development pressures, known stormwater issues, and environmental concerns. And this was done through a combination of a desktop review of background information, again, recognizing that a lot of it was pretty outdated. But then we also complemented that with interviews with staff and with a workshop with Squamish Nation and community stakeholders early in the process to get their input on these matters as well. And so some of what we found here, one is that there's there's 15 different watersheds that span the municipal boundaries, so it's a lot. There's localized flooding throughout, especially low lying areas, development pressures throughout, but especially in that downtown core, high groundwater table, especially in those low lying areas, and concerns with potential environmental impacts, recognizing that there wasn't a lot of quantifiable data available to us. None of this, I think, was a surprise really, but the district just hadn't gone through that process yet of of really collecting this information and using it to decide, okay, where do we focus our efforts? So one of the things that we wanted to avoid here was saying, okay, you need to go and develop an ISMP for every single watershed. That would be unnecessary and extremely costly. So what we did was look at where you should be focusing your efforts. So we identified three different priority watersheds. We based them, this prioritization, really on two criteria. One was watersheds that are currently experiencing issues due to past land use and development, and also where future development was anticipated to cover at least 10% of the watershed and therefore where future impacts were concerned, so where future impacts could worsen existing issues. And based on these, we recommend that an ISMP and monitoring are recommended in those areas. So those were the the criteria that informed these three here. So those are the How Sound Watershed, which is really that downtown core, Denville, Loggers East sort of area, Squamish River East, recognizing that that's an enormous watershed, so we suggest kind of partitioning that off to generally the Brackendale area and some of the estates there, and then the Mamquam River. And in terms of how you go about doing this, we recommend generally that you you develop an ISMP over the course of about a couple of years, that's about as long as it takes, and do that repeatedly until these are are developed here. And so the district plans on, our staff plan on initiating the next ISMP in this Priority One area, basically as soon as this Phase One process is wrapped up, and then it would move into those subsequent priority areas over the coming years. And I thought it was worth noting here that when we developed the Liquid Waste Management Plan, we figured, just based on information at that time, that there would be potentially five different areas warranting an ISMP, but then through this process of a really fine tuning information and looking at priorities, we recommend these three areas here. And actually, in that Priority One, we recommend including the Ballycliff, the watershed, the Squamish that Ballycliff is in, in that study area, just for cost efficiencies in developing the plans, something that's pretty commonly done. You don't have to, your study area can be whatever you want it to be, and this is the the approach that we recommend here. And then so still along the lines of, you know, this kind of stormwater side of things, we developed the scope of an environmental monitoring program for the district. And its purpose was to, or how the district will use it rather, is to establish a baseline understanding of watershed conditions in a really quantifiable way. So there wasn't a lot of data on which we could measure, like I said, in a quantifiable way, what watershed watershed health is now and what impacts have been or could be, but gathering this data will support you in answering that question. It will also help the district understand the influence of development over time, establish performance targets as part of these catchment specific ISMPs. And then using that, inform decisions about the type of stormwater management practices that you require in those areas, both of the district and of developers, and then track those changes over time and use that to continuously adapt your management practices. So if you ever hear adaptive management, that's where having data supports that. It tells you how you need to adapt. And just like we don't recommend developing ISMPs in every watershed, just with limited resources and looking at how you would use the information, we recommend that this program is implemented in these priority areas, and it will support the development of those ISMPs. So there's a few different indicators that we're recommending that are monitored. Some of them can be collected through desktop analysis, like total impervious area and tree canopy, that sort of thing. And then others are going to require some fieldwork, like fisheries and habitat data, and then all of those bulleted indicators there, the water quality, flow level, erosion, and then benthic invertebrates, which are species of insects that are sensitive to water quality. So we recommend that all of these are monitored within these watersheds and then used to develop these ISMPs. And over, you know, the five or six years that these ISMPs are developed, the cost is it's it's just under 200,000. And then so lastly, what we did on the stormwater front was develop Terms of Reference to guide these catchment specific ISMPs. So the Terms of Reference provides direction on priority areas, as you've seen there. It describes linkages to other district plans and objectives, so especially when these are being passed off to consultants or even members of staff that are developing them. It helps ensure alignment amongst plans and that the right things are being referenced at the right time. It outlines guidance on stakeholder engagement processes, technical requirements, so the types of information that should be collected and analyzed through the process. And then it also describes desired outcomes and deliverables. And one of the things that will really support the district's both funding processes and decision-making processes is that we've outlined the need for a capital plan, a specific capital plan for each watershed out of these ISMPs that's based on an understanding of capacity issues and needs, condition, and water quality. So then the next thing that we looked at here, and this is now moving into what is more classically the asset management side of this whole scope of work, first of all was a natural assets valuation. And so I'll start by by saying that this is actually a very evolving and leading edge sort of area for municipalities to be, first of all, even considering it and then actually integrating it into planning processes. So this is new territory that we were entering into with the district here, but we're looking at this because they provide really important services to the community. So. at the right time. It outlines guidance on stakeholder engagement processes, technical requirements, so the types of information that should be collected and analyzed through the process, and then it also describes desired outcomes and deliverables. And one of the things that will really support the district's both funding processes and decision-making processes is that we've outlined the need for a capital plan, a specific capital plan for each watershed out of these ISMPs, that's based on an understanding of capacity issues and needs, condition and water quality. So then the next thing that we looked at here, and this is now moving into what is more classically the asset management side of this whole scope of work, first of all was a natural assets valuation. And so I'll start by saying that this is actually a very evolving and leading-edge sort of area for municipalities to be, first of all, even considering it, and then actually integrating it into planning processes. So this is new territory that we were entering into with the district here, but we're looking at this because they provide really important services to the community. So stormwater, we looked specifically at the stormwater services that natural assets provide, like conveyance or storage, water quality treatment, that sort of thing. And the idea is that if they didn't exist, if these natural assets couldn't provide that function, you would then have to build engineered infrastructure to provide the same sort of service. So that was our approach that we took, that sort of philosophy is what guided our approach to conducting the valuation. So what we did here was first quantify, we'll first identify the types of assets that provide a stormwater service function. We looked at what that service is, so that's where we've listed them here, you'll see things like rainwater conveyance and attenuation, each of them provides a slightly different service. We looked at how much of that natural asset exists, and then we looked at using high-level unit costs for built infrastructure, we looked at, or we assigned a value to that infrastructure based on what that built infrastructure would be to replace it. So this was, this was a really high-level cursory first cut at this whole thing, but we didn't have that information before, and so I guess just a couple caveats there, is one that, you know, we did come up with a value of around $380 million, that's just for stormwater services provided by those assets, that doesn't include things like the habitat service that they provide, or recreation, carbon sequestration, that sort of thing, so if anything, the value is likely higher, but this was, again, a first, a first cut at it. And then we also looked at what the value of those services are in areas that are developable, so areas that are at risk of those assets being removed or replaced with infrastructure, homes, that sort of thing. And the reason that we did this is because we feel that it's worth communicating the value of these assets when making decisions about land use and about development, and then also about how stormwater is managed. So you can continue to use stormwater, or these natural assets rather, to an extent, and then if you choose to develop in some of these areas, you would need to build infrastructure in addition to that. And then lastly here, this value also doesn't account for the lifecycle costs of that built infrastructure, it's just the capital. So over time, again, these costs would be much higher to replace these with engineered So what we recommend out of this is that, because again, this was, this was a really high-level first cut, and I understand that council might be a bit interested in natural assets and how we went about it, what we recommend is that much more detailed consideration of natural assets happens through the development of catchment-specific ISMPs and through land use planning processes, so for example, through the Lagers East area plan or any other area plans that end up getting developed. We also recommend that the district updates the OCP in the future to include really explicitly consideration for natural assets. I understand that, you know, the OCP was just updated, this isn't a priority recommendation, but just being more explicit about natural assets and their function and how they're included in these, these different land use planning and decision-making processes is something that we would recommend. And then lastly, we recommend that the district includes natural assets in all of its asset management processes and practices, so in, when it develops asset management investment plans in the future, in developing and maintaining its asset inventories and understanding replacement costs. And this is all something that will just happen over time, all that, again, this is very new for communities to be considering this in their asset management practices. It's still fairly new for communities to really be paying attention to asset management at all, let alone, let alone natural asset management, so this is really leading edge And so next, I'll get into the asset management investment plan here, which did not include the natural asset component, this was now a separate exercise. It answered the questions, what is the district own in terms of its stormwater assets, what's the cost to replace them, like, for like, what's their age and their estimated remaining life, and then how much would need to be invested annually to replace them to provide the current level of service? So we're not talking about improving level of service or really changing the types of infrastructure that's used, this is just to keep what's there there and functioning the way that it should. And I'll add here that it's actually, it's a bit of a misnomer to call this a plan, it's really more of a tool, is how I view it anyway, it provides a forecast of potential spending needs over time, but it doesn't tell you exactly what you need to replace and when, and it's not based on risk, this one isn't based on the condition of assets, we use general assumptions around expected service life from assets, and based on their age, what their remaining life is, and use that to come up with what that spending forecast is over time. So it's, your, your capital plan is what would give you that more risk-based idea of specific near-term funding needs and what those projects are, so this doesn't get to projects, but what it does do is give you a useful understanding of what that funding gap is, when you compare it to what the district is currently spending on stormwater. And this is the sort of tool, both for stormwater assets and for district-wide assets, for all of your assets, you would use that to inform, you know, the setting of tax rates and user fees and that sort of thing. So to develop this, this plan, this is where we, we went through quite the process to improve the district stormwater inventory, asset inventory. We had a dedicated stormwater technician that worked for pretty much all of last summer, looking at every as-built that the district had and updating attributes accordingly in the district's GIS system. And then these were used to inform the inputs that went into the plan. And what was really nice about this as well is that we linked nodes of infrastructure together, which is an important step actually to get the district set up for doing hydraulic modeling, which we would recommend that you do in the development of catchment-specific ISMPs. So you went from about here on, you know, your understanding of, of assets and what was in the inventory to about here, there's still, you know, a few gaps, but it was like big headway made on the, on the inventory. And so this is some of the findings here, so we looked at, basically we created different buckets of assets, breaking them down into things like floodboxes and culverts and mains. And what we found is that the total replacement value for the district's current assets is around $133 million in $2018. And this table here, this also breaks down those assets by category, and it shows roughly the quantity of each one, what their expected percent remaining life is, again, just going by asset age, so not necessarily by condition, it's really common that some assets, you could get more life out of them with really good maintenance practices, and then if maintenance practices have fallen by the wayside over time, communities could also see them getting less life out of them, and that's where good maintenance practices come in. But so using just assumptions there around, around remaining life and asset age, overall, the district's assets are at about half of their useful life. You'll see here that some of them, like the pump stations and floodboxes, they're a bit older, and their replacement time will come up sooner. And so this column here on the right, the AALCI, the ALKI, is the average annual lifecycle cost investment, and that's basically on average, what do you need to invest annually to replace that infrastructure, recognizing that when you have a big replacement year, it's going to be way higher than the average, and then there'll be some years where it's, where it's much less. So we also wanted to look at, well, what would that ALKI be if you got more life out of your assets? What if you got 25% more life out of those assets, or what if you got 50% longer? So this was like a bit of a, sort of a risk tolerance kind of look at this, and what we found was that even if we assume that you get 50% longer out of those assets than what we're assuming based on their estimated remaining life, you would still be looking at an ALKI of around $1.5 million per year. And so recognizing that there hasn't been dedicated annual funding to stormwater in the past, that's basically your funding gap there, it's around at least 1.5 million. And so like I said, your capital plan is what will give you, you know, the best idea of your near-term funding needs, but this graph here will show you based on, again, these assumptions around remaining useful life, what those spending needs are. So the big peaks that you see there, coming up, it's a little bit hard to see here, but it would be around 20, 24, 25, that's where you have those older assets, like the floodboxes and pump stations coming up for replacement, and then your newer infrastructure needing its replacement further out. So again, this is just a forecast, you would never use this to decide what projects that need to be constructed and when, but it does give you that idea of what your funding needs are over time, and compared to what you're spending now, gives you an idea of where you want to get to to be more sustainable on a, on a financial bottom line.
Could I just add one thing to that as well? So when the district has done asset management plans in the past, you know, often when we're doing, looking at just the age of assets and determining replacements at the end of life, that's a bit of a conservative approach. We've found through our sewer and water master plans, where we've actually gone and collected condition information, that often, and also doing, looking at assets from a risk perspective, we find we're able to defer the replacement of those assets, and often the cost can come down, so often the first look where you're, you're looking at it from more of a high-level perspective, the cost can be higher, and then it can be refined as you start to dig into more detail. So we'd be looking at, looking at what's the probability and the consequence of failure of different assets, that would inform where we put our money first, as also, as well as also the timing of when we'd be doing those projects. So the, looking at 25% more life or 50% life is, is really more kind of a sensitivity analysis to see what, what may be possible in terms of reducing those costs. And sorry, one other thing too, the district has just started in the past year, a new annual program of collecting condition information for our stormwater assets, so we'd be putting cameras into our sewer mains and actually starting to collect CCTV video of our, our asset inventory over time. This is a program we've been doing with our sewer assets, and our sewer assets have actually, we've found them to be in much better condition than what we would have estimated, so that's allowed us to reduce our costs there. We can hope for the same thing for the stormwater assets, but that information remains to be collected, so we'll be, this is the first year of, of that program, we'll have new information on that soon.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so in summary, the AMIP is up here in terms of its guidance on allocation of funding and in determining funding needs and how that's spent. The risk-based capital plan, like David said, it really should be risk-based, is what you should be using to decide how money is spent and how much is needed and when. So the funding review here, we conducted this once we had, to this, again, high-level kind of extent, quantified that funding gap. Historically, stormwater, the district has been underfunded, and this was largely just because the district didn't know what those funding requirements were, and so that's, that was one of the key things that this project aimed to address, or one of the key gaps that we addressed through this project. And so what we found is that, kind of no matter how you slice it, whether it's 1 or 1.5 or $2 million a year, the district needs to move towards more sustainable funding, or it will accept the risk of asset failure involved in not funding, or not increasing funding. So some of the options here in terms of increasing revenues, the first that would be easiest to administer, but not necessarily be a guaranteed funding source or necessarily equitable, as in user pay, would be through general taxation, so that's currently how resources are allocated to stormwater. What would be harder to administer and would be more of a burden on, on staff, but what would be more guaranteed in terms of it being dedicated to stormwater specifically and more equitable, would be any of these other approaches here, and they generally increase in effort to administer from top to bottom there. So could be a levy on property tax notice, parcel tax, user fee, or dedicated stormwater utility, which is just kind of another shape that the user fee takes form. But so there's just different things to consider here, trade-offs between these different funding approaches. We're not recommending a single one at this time, that's something that, you know, we want to lay out what those trade-offs are and leave it up to staff and council to decide on a suitable funding approach. And then of course, the, you know, the, the district currently does this too, but also layering on DCCs and grants to supplement, you know, that more steady revenue, would be something to consider. And so lastly, we looked at public support for this whole process. So we had, at the start of the project, developed a stakeholder engagement strategy, and it's worth noting that we were intentional about engaging stakeholders at that involve stage of the IAP2 spectrum of participation. And so we factored in community input through that stakeholder workshop, or sorry, that workshop with stakeholders and with Squamish Nation at the outset of the project, and then through a public survey at the end. And so in that workshop, we used that as an opportunity to inform the identification, rather, of stormwater issues and goals that we set, and then we used the public survey to assess support for the direction in this plan. So in that survey, we shared out all of the outcomes that you've seen shared here, and we got 21 responses to the survey, nearly all respondents either strongly agreed or agreed with the direction in the ISMP. And there's particularly strong support for the recommendations around the natural asset valuation and recommendations for management. So in summary here, these are the, the kind of key recommendations from this whole process, is one that the district collects asset condition data to better understand risks, and then use this to inform capital planning, that the district updates its subdivision and development control bylaw and zoning bylaw to clarify stormwater management requirements, will make it a lot easier for staff to discern what's required and where and for what reason, and to communicate that to developers. And then also that the district continues to engage staff, council, and the public to build awareness of the importance of good asset management practices and stormwater management practices, and also funding needs, again, to support that moving towards more sustainable funding levels. And then we recommend that the district develops and implements the catchment-specific ISMPs in those priority watersheds that we outlined, and that the district also conducts environmental monitoring in those areas, and then uses the terms of reference that we developed to guide those plans. And then lastly, we recommend that the district considers natural assets in its asset management, stormwater management, and land use planning processes, that it refines funding needs through further improvements to data and risk-based capital planning. Also of note there is that the district plans to develop an asset management plan for all of its assets this coming year, and so that's when we would recommend really making decisions around funding and potential increases to things like taxation or the introduction of user fees. We recommend that that is parked until a more fulsome discussion can be had about funding needs for all of the district's assets, but that, through that process, the district does move towards more sustainable funding through some sort of increase in revenues over time. And just in closing here, again, I wanted to note that the, the district and staff here really made significant improvements, both to its asset inventory and its understanding of issues and funding needs and where to focus improvement efforts over the coming years. I think previously it was a bit like, you know, we know we need to do something, but we don't really know what and when, and so that's what this plan sets out here, is a structured approach to improving service delivery, and this will, over time, help you be more strategic about And this will over time help you be more strategic about how stormwater services provided and again, get that funding up to a more sustainable level. So that's it for my presentation there. I know that was a lot and very happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ross, I'm wondering if you could flip back up the slide of the goals and just to refresh everyone's memory, the resolution for considerations that we adopt the management plan and I'll start with Mary Elliot.
Thank you. Really excited to see the natural asset piece in this document. So recognizing that just a few municipalities are starting to move into this field, the report doesn't talk about restoration. So we talk about understanding what's there in each watershed, but doesn't necessarily talk about using restoration to avoid more engineered infrastructure. Is that part of what we will get to when we do the watershed specific ISMPs?
Yes, so that would typically be one of the management approaches or one of the kind of buckets of recommendations that would come out of an integrated stormwater management plan, the catchment specific ones, is how to, or in what cases you would do that as an approach to addressing issues, to improving conditions in those areas and not just preventing further degradation. So absolutely in catchment specific ones, you would look at that.
And then in terms of the costing of the, the assets that are there now and their replacement value, do we contemplate growth or climate change needs in that replacement value? In terms of heavier rainfall, so more stormwater all at once, or just if one neighborhood's going to grow much more quickly than another, will we replace that asset? It might be twice the size, that sort of thing? Or those replacement costs adjust what we have now?
Yes, so the replacement costs assume that are just provide that same, it's provide, so I'll backtrack here. So there are different approaches that one can take to evaluating natural assets. One of them is based on basically information that's developed from a hydraulic model. We didn't do that and that's at the point that you could look at what future needs are and then looking at the services that are provided by those natural assets and what the engineered infrastructure would need to replace it. So currently we did not do that as part of this approach. So if anything, the value would be higher once that's done. We do recommend that that's done as part of catchment specific ISMPs.
Okay. My last question is there's like notes in here that the OCP is at second reading and that we should update our subdivision control bylaw. So there's a few sort of timing references in the report that made me wonder if, did our update to the subdivision and development control bylaw last year address some of these issues? Did we put any language in the OCP around natural assets or various things?
Through the chairs. So the subdivision development control bylaw update did not include the overhaul of the stormwater section that we would like it to. That was somewhat limited in scope and our, this review took place towards the end of that bylaw update. It was a little bit too late to incorporate that. But we would like to see the next time that the subdivision bylaw is updated, hopefully within the next one or two years, that the stormwater section be one of the primary focuses for improving. And in terms of the OCP, I, I didn't see that wording on the second reading, but we were, Urban Systems was fully aware of sort of the status of our OCP in the preparation, and it had just recently been adopted in the preparation of this integrated stormwater management plan. So the recommendations, I think that's clearly noted are that as part of the next OCP update, and it's not a really urgent thing, it's not a huge driver to update the OCP, but that at that time you should be incorporating natural assets and probably some further guidance on stormwater issues.
My concern is that we're going to do two neighborhood plans during our term and I want to make sure that this is captured within that work specifically. So I don't know whether we need to amend the OCP to do that, but certainly we need to be thinking about that as we do.
Yeah, so my question kind of follows on from that and it goes back to the natural asset valuation piece. You identified just over $22 million worth of assets approximately that are considered at risk in high development areas. Are those mapped? And if so, how do we ensure that they are readily available to planning staff and in decision-making process for future development?
Yeah, yeah, through the chair, yeah. They are and we have given that information to, to staff to support decision-making in that process. Yeah, we are aware of some of the area planning processes that are underway or about to be underway and we're personally very keen to see natural assets considered through those processes. And so it's definitely one of the things to be considered at that time is how to protect those from, from future development. And if not, then again, accepting the, the trade-offs that are involved in them. That's at least what we would recommend is that a fulsome discussion of trade-offs are, happens during that process.
And just to add to that as well, we can potentially incorporate that into our staff GIS web map so that it would be sort of a trigger. I mean, given the fact that we don't have OCP policy that directly specifies what to do with that information, there's a little bit of unclarity there, but at least it would flag that factor in, it could be raised in, in the review.
That was going to be one of my follow-up questions if it wasn't in the GIS map. So if we could do that, I think that'd be really great. My second question was just around the recommendation of including considerations from the stormwater management plan in the zoning bylaw update. And given that the first open house for that is tomorrow night, I want to just double check with staff that you guys are going to be coordinating on integrating that piece with the zoning bylaw update.
So I, I think that we would be looking at sort of what the policy direction is going to be probably triggered as part of our subdivision and development control bylaw review. I think that most of the regulations are going to live within that document. And then probably based on where we go with that, we could look at incorporating a policy as appropriate into the zoning bylaw at that time.
I was wondering if there's any new insights gained through this project into how our GIS mapping system is working for us and how it could be, new investments could be made into that system? And related to that, you mentioned new cameras and forms of data collecting. Are there budget considerations in future for how we can improve that measurement and those mapping tools?
So at the outset of this project, our stormwater layer within our GIS program was very poor. So, you know, we had missing assets. If you clicked on an asset within our GIS program, you wouldn't find out the critical information like what size is it, what the material is for some assets. So we had very patchy information through this project where we had a dedicated technician pour through literally hundreds of as-built drawings and populate that information within our GIS, collect it or link it all so that it says upstream downhill, downstream downhill, flow direction in the pipes. All that information's really critical for then creating a hydraulic model. All of that was, was completed. So we really improved the information dramatically within our GIS. There still is further information that needs to be collected. A lot of it's going to be field collection, which our public works staff can do and there's, they have apps now where they can be inputting field information that ultimately gets incorporated into our GIS. So it's been a significant step forward, but there still is constant refinement that should be done. Within our, you, you had a question about the inspection and our condition assessment that we're going to be doing.
Do we need to enhance our, our GIS platform or the investments we should be making there and in our monitoring systems and the equipment if we like?
So when we do our condition assessments, we typically go out to a contractor. It is very specialized services contractors who will often complete flushing as part of the program. There's special flushing equipment that's required and very specialized cameras as well. Then there's also quite a bit of analysis of actually reviewing those hundreds of hours of video and noting deficiencies in the pipe as, and what the remediation methods are. So it is something that we go out to, to a contract and select a contractor to do. So I would say probably not in terms of purchasing new equipment or, or technology.
I can, I'll just add to that, the question on the GIS platform. You spoke to the GIS layer specific to stormwater as being very deficient. Probably our only layer that I'm aware of that we use regularly that I would consider to have been deficient. Our GIS system in general, I put up against any province, if not the country, it's top notch.
Two things, in section three, it talks about expand census habitat inventory and mapping and also expand the inventory and mapping of ditches, but I thought we did both those things.
That is correct.
So where, where are we limited in terms of, why do we need to expand that? Because I thought all of our ditches were color-coded and mapped throughout the district.
That is correct. I didn't pick up on that.
I, I, there may be some confusion on the environmental mapping, which is largely a desktop exercise, some field confirmation that was looking at fish presence versus hydraulic evaluation of what exactly is the size of the ditch and what is its ability to convey and the slope of the ditch and sort of things. So there's some overlap, but it's, it's not 100%. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I can also add too that I think part of it is that when we developed this baseline assessment, it was around this time last year. And I think through that process, over the past year, my understanding is that the district did make some more headway on it. We just may not have revisited it again at the very end when we developed those recommendations from the baseline assessment. So that's something that we could adjust if needed and to also clarify it to Chris's point.
Yeah, just a little bit more clarity because that work did get done through the last term. And so it'd just be a good direction for council to know where we need to focus those next efforts. And also after living in a country that had a drought for a long time and then moving here where we get a lot of rain, where do we start to contemplate capturing rainwater for use and storage? And so with the change in the climate, we can expect maybe longer, drier summers. So then, you know, shouldn't we start to think about how we start to capture rainwater and use rainwater for watering fields or firefighting reserves, that sort of thing?
Yeah, so I can start off if you'd like. So we have had rain barrel programs that have been...
On the infrastructures, like for the community. Where are our communities starting to think about this? Because I know homes can do it and people can put gray water capture systems in, but I'm thinking on more of sort of city level.
So within our subdivision development control bylaw, we have, it's called an alternative section. So for larger developments that are coming along, I believe it's three hectares and larger, we're looking at alternative methods of dealing with stormwater, trying to promote groundwater recharge, reducing runoff. And so there are a lot of infrastructure solutions that can be done and that's really a lot of the new development is, is going in that direction versus putting it all into a pipe and then it rockets down the pipe and discharges into a stream causing erosion. So we're moving much more to that alternative approach. That's one of the key things that we actually want to update in our subdivision bylaw is that there's a, a lack of clarity as to when you use a conventional approach, when you need to use an alternative approach. We, we don't really have good teeth or good clarity on when to use one approach versus the other. So that's one of the big things that we do want to update in our bylaw.
On a, on a community-wide basis, district-owned infrastructure, our water master plan doesn't really identify a, an immediate or even, even a medium-term risk to our groundwater supply. Is that right?
Certainly not to our groundwater supply, potable water, no.
So I, I think the idea of, of large rainwater reservoirs, especially like, and sort of being able to switch over at the moment is not an immediate need. We have a lot of infrastructure requirements that are immediate needs. We may, certainly may get there. And you, you mentioned this, separate systems for firefighting, for example. Like, you know, at, at this point, you use potable water and you have a similar integrated system, that'd be a very significant changeover that at this point we wouldn't recommend.
Yeah, and I can add to that too. Typically what, what we see as the mechanism for identifying those needs would be the catchment-specific ISMP and then setting out requirements for large-scale developments to capture rainwater instead of allowing it to run off into the municipal system or, or elsewhere into a water course, what have you. So that's where, that's the level at which we're looking at what is that, you know, existing runoff and then future runoff due to development? And then looking at, okay, is stormwater capture actually something that we would want to look at and for what purpose as well? Not just capturing it for the intent of then discharging it to a water course, but repurposing it. And so what I typically see is that it's done for at like a development level, not for the entire community. And so the name is escaping me, I can follow up with you, but there's a development in Victoria that's actually become like quite famous for that, for having like a closed system using gray water for that reason. But again, it's not, not the city of Victoria doing it, if that makes sense. Yes, thank you.
So my point being is that big new subdivisions that we build will be around for the next 50, 60, 100 years and we know that climate is going to change in that time. So when we say, well, we'll delay updating subdivision and control bylaw for a year or two, we miss a generational opportunity to solve the infrastructure that makes sense for a changing climate. And we also know that our potable water is, is a glacier-fed recharge and glaciers are shrinking faster than everyone anticipated. So if we think long-term, why wouldn't we start to think about the infrastructure that needs to be in place today so that people who own those homes fifty years from now actually have something like that back there? So that's, so there's a timing of when do we update that subdivision and control bylaw? I know we have lots of priorities, but this weighs on my mind about missing opportunities in this generation of homes to actually set them up for, for the future.
And I agree. It's, it's something that's important. We do have, just to reassure you somewhat, we do have some good tools within our existing subdivision bylaw and we actually have a lot of information on these alternative systems that are promoting infiltration of stormwater into, into the ground. There just is a, a little bit of a lack of clarity that can be improved and, and I, I think we should be doing that within the next one, one year probably.
Thank you.
Just one comment of my own and it's not technical core. I think most people have covered the, the bigger questions I had, but it says for budgeting purposes, the district should assume that up to three meetings will take place with Squamish Nation throughout the planning process. And I, that just sort of jumped out at me as a bit prescriptive and with all the things we have going forward, I would just sort of make the comment that I hope that would sort of, in general, do what we need to do to make sure we go forward together with, with the nation. With that, does someone want to move the, the resolution, which is that the district from Squamish adopt the integrated stormwater management plan? Or actually maybe before I ask that, is there any more feedback you need or anything you're hoping to hear from council?
Well, I think that the only thing that we would look to modify before adopting the plan is just the feedback that you provided on the, the baseline assessment. And, and yeah, so we, we'd have a, a minor tweak. I think we'd do some, based on the discussion today, we'd probably make some minor tweaks. But if there's no further feedback, I think we, we have the information we need to finalize the document.
Okay. Well, on the...
Second?
Second? Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, call a question. Some favor, if you want to oppose. No motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it is to three o'clock for a bylaw break?
Twenty?
Until three o'clock for a bylaw break?
So we're going to switch people now, shouldn't we just take a break?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, until three o'clock. No, no. One more, you can do one more.
Fair, right?
All right. We'll come back and I've been promised this next agenda item is really quick, so can you see? Yes, you did. Yeah. So please take it away.
My name's Chris Baker, bylaw supervisor, and I'm here with Chad Williams, building inspector, and Shannon White, sustainability coordinator. The three of us are bringing three separate bylaws to update. Got very brief our point here, but so the solid waste, business license and building bylaw all need to be updated in the, in the ticketing bylaws. So that's what we're, we're here for today.
So there are two types of amendments in this report. New fines created, and that's for the solid waste bylaw, and then slight provisions to ensure references in the ticketing bylaws are up to date with amendments to the subject matter bylaws, solid waste, business license, and building. So for solid waste, this bylaw was revised in 2017 with no fines. Launching a comprehensive outreach, including both education and enforcement, is upcoming. The majority of outreach and education will be done by the sustainability coordinator, with bylaw officers addressing those who remain out of compliance. New fines associated with the required source separation are being presented. The business license amendment, this fine schedule was not included in the notice enforcement bylaw 2014 and is now being added. The building bylaw amendment, when building bylaw was amended in 2018, the references to the two ticketing bylaws were not updated. Updating the references and fines now being presented to ensure harmonization between the bylaws. Next steps in staff recommendation. So the staff recommendation is for council to provide feedback on the proposed amendments, and then next steps, amendments will be brought to another council meeting to be finalized. And so at this point, can, any questions? And potentially depending on which bylaw the question is in reference to, then maybe other my colleagues will fill the question.
Questions, council?
Mary Ellen?
Okay, I always get this confused, but in one bylaw, it says the failure to bag residual waste is $500 fine, and then the other one is $200. The notice enforcement bylaw says $200.
So is that...
The utility bylaw, solid waste utility bylaw says $500. And then my other question related to that is, in an effort to reduce single-use plastics, why are we asking people to bag residual waste?
Does she have a question?
So maybe I'll speak to, I can speak to the why are we asking people to bag solid waste, and then perhaps, I think, are you, right, so...
So on page 163 of our report, it says that is $500.
Right. So one is, so there's the difference between the MTI bylaw and the notice enforcement, and they have different plan levels, and Chris can kind of speak to that. First, I can just answer your question about bagging residual waste. So when we amended the solid waste bylaw in 2017, we incorporated this requirement for essentially garbage to be bagged, and yes, it is not in line with our single-use plastic reduction that we're going towards. However, it is really, it was put in place because of health and safety for the workers at the landfill, the transmission of vectors and disease and contamination at the landfill. It's a best practice for garbage man, like physical management. So we can recommend residents to bag in paper bags as another alternative, but at that point...
Didn't we do see-through bags?
Yes, that is for businesses and multifamily homes.
Move. And the difference between the MTI bylaw and noticing, as far as the amounts being different, and those are completely different ticketing systems, so the maximum allowed in MTI is 1,000, and then in the noticing bylaw it's 500, and there's differences, other differences with the, like, the burden of proof is different between the two different systems. One goes to provincial court, and the other one is adjudicated here locally. We get an adjudicator through the Ministry of Justice that comes right to Squamish. So yeah, with those maximums, I think that's how the other differences fall, is that they're sort of proportional.
So when do we ticket under one versus the other?
Depends on, so you have to serve an MTI to a person. You can mail a notice, so depending on the situation, and also, yeah, depending on, yeah, it's just situational, it'd be a decision by the officer.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments? So I just have here for information and discussion, is there a resolution that you wanted us to move?
I think we're coming back with two bylaws.
Yeah, we're doing a reading tonight. So you have the feedback you need? Okay, thank you. Not too bad, same reason. Less optimistic.
Who is your optimism?
Before.
Scene of the day, he's got a whole...
The Congress is on the way.
Okay, I'll take a recess for five minutes, quarter after, and back. So welcome back once again, and we are on to the business park zoning priority debate.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Daley, Development and Subdivision Coordinator, and this is Jesse Fletcher. We're both with Community Planning. We're here this afternoon to discuss temporary solutions to preserve lands for industrial uses in the business park. We're going to present a couple options for discussion, so feel free to stop us at any time if you have questions or would like to discuss the options. The February 12th committee of the whole meeting, council directed staff to bring back options outlining temporary solutions which address commercial usage within the business park. The majority of parcels in the Sea to Sky Business Park are zoned light industrial I-1. In 2011, the current zoning bylaw number 2200 introduced two commercial uses into the I-1 zone, fitness center and restaurant, up to 50 seats. Prior to the adoption of bylaw 2200, these uses were only permitted on two I-1 properties. Impacts of these uses have been noted in recent years. There has been a rapid increase in commercialized tenants in the Sea to Sky Business Park in recent years, primarily with fitness centers and restaurant uses. This has led to the rise of many issues, including increased lease rates. Staff have come to understand that buildings that are suitable for some commercial uses are associated with higher lease rates than areas where developments are strictly intended for light industrial uses. Zoning that supports commercial activities may be driving lease rates up out of reach for some industrial tenants. Incompatibility of industrial and commercial uses. When industrial and commercial activities are mixed in the same building, considerable tenant improvements are triggered after construction. F2 and F3 uses are industrial uses, with F3 being considered a high-hazard use, such as a body shop or a distillery. As you can see from the image above, F2 and F3 uses can coexist in the same building without substantial firewalls separating their uses. When an A2 occupancy, such as a gym or restaurant, is located next door, the fire separation and noise separation requirements increase. Often, the light industrial user ends up bearing the cost of these tenant improvements, reducing the amount of space readily available. Parking. Commercial uses such as fitness centers or restaurants require significantly more parking than light industrial uses, as you can see from this table. Given that the business park is not within walkable distance from most residential neighborhoods and lacks an active transportation infrastructure, many customers drive to these commercial businesses, further reinforcing this issue. Some of the recent developments in the business park planned parking provisions based on old industrial parking requirements, allowing for outdoor storage and lay-down space, which may result in parking challenges for commercial activities as the business park approaches full build-out. As commercial tenancies start occurring in these areas, the storage lay-down space tends to be replaced with required additional parking. On the other hand, anticipating commercial uses in these locations and providing the appropriate number of parking spaces results in a higher proportion of land being allocated to parking, as proposed to a scenario where properties are exclusively used for light industrial land uses, and more land can be allocated to employment space. Staff evaluated the list of permitted uses in the I-1 zone to determine which uses were more industrial in nature and which were more commercial. The criteria included type of service provided, the occupancy classification of each use, the land required for the use, the amount and timing of visitation that the service produced, and OCP policy. It was determined that there is a large number of uses that may have a commercial nature but are more appropriate in the industrial park due to the amount of land required to provide the use. For example, automobile-oriented commercial or building supply outlet, and low intensity of use, such as a nursery. OCP policy states that commercial activities in the business park are limited to automobile-oriented commercial, building supply outlet, accessory retail sales, trade contractor facilities, and indoor recreational uses that require warehouse-like space, such as a climbing gym. The next step was to determine where these uses were occurring. Staff completed an inventory of all businesses operating within the Sea to Sky Business Park and which businesses fit staff's definition of commercial activity. Those locations are identified in purple above. Staff also identified recently approved development permits and development permits in process that were developed to accommodate parking and fire separations for the more commercialized uses that are currently permitted in their zone. I'm going to pass it off to you, Jesse, now to go over the options.
Awesome. All right, so staff developed three options to present today, so start with option one. So currently, fitness center and restaurant are permitted uses in the I-1, I-4, and I-8 zones, the most prevalent industrial zones in the Sea to Sky Business Park. In this option, fitness center and restaurant would be removed from the permitted uses in the industrial zones for properties specifically located in the business park. All existing fitness center and restaurant uses in the park would become lawfully non-conforming and could continue operating unless the use stops for a continuous period of six months. Potential benefits of this option, or the potential benefit is that it is equally restrictive across the business park. The drawbacks of this option include that a large number of businesses would become lawfully non-conforming, which create other negative implications, including the limited ability or potential inability of non-conforming businesses to benefit from insurance in the event of a catastrophic fire, the limited ability or potential inability of non-conforming businesses to secure financing, the inability of non-conforming businesses to expand, grow, or substantially change without a rezoning. This scenario was seen locally along Paco Road, which was zoned residential for about 25 years despite ongoing industrial activities that limited tenants' ability to grow their businesses. Finally, this limits the options for development permits in process that have recently been approved or issued, who have designed their parking and building separations to accommodate the uses that are currently permitted in the I-1 zone. These businesses would likely need to seek rezoning power to obtain a building permit for creating obstacles to their development. Option two is staff's recommendation. In this option, a new industrial zone would be drafted based on the I-1 light industrial zone. This zone would exclude commercial, fitness center, and restaurant uses. This zone would be applied to all existing industrial areas of the business park. Fitness center and restaurant uses would be permitted only in the specific units and properties that currently encompass these uses or are proposed through an active development application. Benefits of this approach are that it avoids creating the issues associated with lawful nonconformism that were visited in the last slide. It preserves undeveloped industrial land for industrial employment, and it does not penalize applicants who have planned their development based on the current zoning. Drawbacks include that it is a slightly morally voracious amendment, and that over time it could lead to increased lease rates for fitness centers and restaurants zoned uses by constraining the supply of these lands. Option two does include two modifications. The first modification specifically excludes properties zoned I-8 from rezoning to the new I-1 zone. The range of commercial uses were specifically considered during the creation of the I-8 zone in December of 2014, and therefore may warrant a broader range of permitted commercial-type uses than other industrial areas in the business park. Attachment three, including your report today, includes a background regarding the creation of I-8. The rationale for allowing some limited commercial businesses in the business park is that it would provide some limited convenience services to surrounding businesses without negatively impacting other commercial areas in the district. Modification number two excludes properties zoned I-9 from the new I-1 zone. The area zoned I-9 was specifically intended to encompass some commercial uses that serve the day-to-day needs of the business park area, and therefore may not be appropriate for rezoning to escape commercial uses. All right, so then option three, this is a variation of option two, which applies a new I-1 zone based on the I-1 light industrial zone, again excluding fitness center and restaurant, to business park properties that are adjacent to and south of Industrial Way as identified on the slide above in blue. This option would need to recognize any active development permits that have been approved in the past two years. This portion of the business park is considered by staff to be the area with the most potential to accommodate additional light industrial activities. The benefits of this approach include that it has fewer impacts to existing commercial businesses which largely operate in the northern portion of the business park, and that it aligns with the now repealed Business Park Subarea Plan, which identified the parcels north of Commercial Way as appropriate for limited commercialized services. Drawbacks of this approach include that it would impact the development opportunities for landowners in the area that is downzoned, and that it preserves a significantly smaller area of the business park for light industrial uses. Option three can be modified so that the following uses are also not permitted, building supply outlet and automobile sales. These commercial uses are currently permitted in the I-1 zone and are considered appropriate by staff for some areas of the business park, given the lack of more suitable locations within the community. However, the south end of the business park is considered more suitable for true light industrial uses, which do not include building supply outlet and auto sales, excluding these uses from an I-11 zone for the type of land for industrial uses. So there is a list of limitations with this approach, and the drawback to all three options is that these changes will not address current land use incompatibilities that exist in the business park today. For example, the parking constraints and fire separations where incompatible uses are occurring. Staff are addressing this through business licensing and working with the owners of the lands to find interim solutions, including reorganizing parking lots, and then making notes on buildings in our files to advise potential future tenants of potential limitations. So next step is to receive feedback regarding the options presented today. As a high-level summary, option one included the most restrictive zoning to the industrial park by removing fitness center and restaurant use from the entire park and creating a significant number of lawfully non-conforming properties. Option two included the option to create a new zone for properties that are still being used for industrial purposes while allowing existing commercialized uses to continue unaffected. Suboptions included excluding I-8 and/or I-9 from this option. Option three includes restricting commercial uses from a portion of the business park shown in blue. This option includes a modification that further restricts auto, commercial, and building supply outlet from this area. Once staff have direction, we'll draft amendments and bring them to a future council meeting for readings. This will include a public hearing that will give the public an opportunity to provide feedback. A more detailed review of the business park will occur in the comprehensive zoning bylaw update, which is ongoing. And then finally, in addition to the proposed amendments to preserve industrial land use opportunities within the business park, staff proposed a concurrent amendment to the rail marshalling yards I-2 zone, which predominantly applies to the property referred to as the VCR rail yard, depicted on the slide above. Staff are proposing the following amendments to explicitly prohibit cannabis production in the I-2 zone, and to increase the maximum height for principal and accessory buildings not located in close proximity to the existing residential neighborhood. These amendments will maintain the strategic value of the property for future industrial development and increase flexibility for intensive industrial uses that require larger buildings in close proximity to the rail lines. Restraining cannabis production will preserve these lands for intensive industrial uses. These amendments would be consistent with OCP policy 17.2B. Head it over to you.
Mary Ellen?
So in the Sea to Sky Business Park, storage facilities are no longer allowed. So when we made that change, did we create non-conforming uses? So when we made that change, did we create nonconforming uses for the existing facility?
Through the chair, there is, some of the facilities have been identified as allowable to continue, and then I believe a couple were made nonconforming. We do have some nonconforming storage uses, but...
So how, so in that change, we made some of them allowable, but if they cease operations as storage facilities, they can restart as well?
If I may prove, we used a similar approach to the option two, which is make those businesses that were licensed allowable, so allow the use on those specific properties, essential spots owned to existing users, and then disallow it everywhere else. Some businesses were doing it unofficially, so there was no business license or anything like that, and so those would have fallen into this lawfully nonconforming area.
Can we add, in terms of option two, which is staff's recommendation, can you add the limits to auto, commercial, and building supply that you propose in option three, option two?
Staff can do that, yes.
So there's no reason why it's not involved? I was just wondering. Okay. And then talks about, like, we are going to do a more fulsome update of the zoning bylaw. So we'll do further engagement beyond these changes as we move through that process?
Yeah.
Or do you think we will hit the mark with option two?
Through you, Chair. Yeah, in the more fulsome consideration, we'd actually really like to bring in some of the work that's being completed through the economic development team around supply and demand of employment lands, and ultimately, it'd be much better to move in with that information to say this is how much like industrial we need, this is how much commercial we need, and be able to make a bit more of a strategic choice around how to fly that line of the zoning. And there'll be engagement with business park owners to share through that with us.
Counselor Harper.
Thank you. In option two, if we have a business there that's currently, if all those buildings are built in such a way that can expand into the neighboring bay if you need more room, I really appreciate that flexibility, and I'm sure the tenants do as well. So I'm curious about a business that is currently operating in one bay and wants to expand into that, where we've started to reduce the tightening of restrictions on. So if they're there and operating, this would restrict expansion into an adjacent bay, even though we're allowing it to operate in one. Just wondering how much constraint we're putting on those businesses that are already there and operating, and you might be looking at growing in the same central location that they're in. How bad little nuances have been to be accounted for in this process?
So I think in drafting these options, staff's intention was to implement what we had heard from council, which was to constrain the extension of commercialized uses. So in creating these, this has been created with the idea that we wouldn't see any further expansion from one bay to another, and in fact, in figuring out how we would draft these, the idea is to find each individual business and make sure that the zoning provides opportunity for them, if in option two, to have ongoing permitted use that they have in that one bay, but not to provide it in adjacent bays. And in some ways, if we do want to constrain commercialization, we will have to go to that level of detail because we can't regulate the individual users. We can only say whether or not in a particular property a certain use is allowed. So for example, say you have a bay here and there's a restaurant, and next door, there's currently some light industrial use. If we were to take that whole area and say, well, we might want this restaurant to be able to expand, so we're going to say this whole area, both these bays can be restaurant, then another operation could come in there and take that spot, and we can't differentiate between those two businesses. So we kind of have to make a choice. Either we say, well, we're going to constrain to what there is and allow no further, or if we want to support existing businesses and provide that opportunity to expand, we would also have to loosen the regulations that could allow other operations to come in. It's, I guess, a trade-off, pros and cons about how we want to manage that approach. But this has been proposed with the idea of constraining to the current footprint of existing businesses.
If I may just also add to that, some businesses would be able to expand if they have an industrial component to them. So let's say a brewery that has a restaurant, you could continue expanding the brewery, just not the restaurant. Or, you know, a warehousing facility that has some sales in it, we'll continue to be able to expand the industrial, if not the commercial.
Thank you for that clarity. That's good for you. Counselor Anderson?
Yes, I just wanted to, first of all, point out that there's a reference to quantum technology here, and it's on page 206 of our report. The activities they're doing, they're doing manufacturing. They're doing fabrication, and they're building skids of helium recycling machines, so that there isn't only the CAD work done. So they, in other words, they're in compliance more than what we'd see from the front door. The, another question I have is the definition of building supplies, and whether there might be a need to finesse a definition or think about it, because we've got different things going on as to building supplies. One of them is also in your report, and that's Pacific Northwest, it's in fact, a cannabis production facility supplier. They supply equipment for those facilities, and they, that is a building supply outlet, I suppose, that's how you've labeled it. And then we have the Ronas and Home Depots, and then we have also a plumbing supply store that is moving into the BCR marshalling yards and displacing manufacturing. They're using that building, there's two manufacturers needing to move now. So that's also a building supply. So how do we define building supply for the purposes of this initiative? Is that a question to consider? This is quite a range.
Okay. So through you, Chair. The, I think when we look at the business park in general, if we were truly wanting to focus on pure light industrial, that probably wouldn't be a use that we would intend to go in there, because it is a retail outlet in essence. But there's a couple of things that kind of complicate that situation. One, that we don't have a lot of places for those type of operations to go, and so they are landing in the business park and having for some time. And two, there are quite a number, it's a large portion of operations that are in the business park fall under that category. So I think in what we've been drafting and talking about, oh, and third, the, I believe the OCP policy actually calls out trade contractors as one of the supported uses in the business park, correct? So we've kind of got these three factors that have led us to say, well, maybe this is the place where those land, and we're going to leave it at that. If there's an interest in doing a more nuanced approach from council where some trade contractors may be appropriate, some aren't, we'd have to look into that. But to this date, because, one, there's quite a few of them, it's like, not as dominant, but it's a very large proportion of businesses there. Two, where else do they go? And three, their support in our policy for that, we've essentially accepted that as one of the uses in that area. There are going to be ramifications that, as you said, it could push out some other users, but given our kind of community context and policy at this point, we've just accepted that they're there.
Okay. I'll have a follow-up there.
Well, I'd like to give my support to option two, and the, under the second bullet, excluding properties currently zoned I-9 from rezoning to the new, that is, if you, you'll know what I'm, where I'm referring to here. And my reason for that is that I feel that option two captures more of the potential area that we'd like to protect. There are, on the west side of Queensway, north of that blue zone that you'd highlighted, some potential, parcels of interest for traditional industrial, light industrial uses. So I feel that geographically, I'm more sympathetic to option two, and I'm hopeful that the provision for that block, that I-9 block, we can attend to that. Solterra has sent a letter to council some time ago, some of us have been in discussion with that developer, and my sense is, is that there is some possibility to, that the developer, that that landowner is sympathetic to our goals here. I thought that, I think that that second element there best captures that orientation. I would also like to support the element regarding cannabis production in the BCR yards. There is, anecdotally, we are hearing that we, that is, tenants there, or coming to, myself at any rate, pointing out that cannabis production is having an upward pressure on lease rates. It's a cash-strung industry, and there are leases up for renewal there, and this is where this has been reflected. So cannabis production also takes up a large building, one of the second largest building on that site, just plans for more. It's a large area, and there's an opportunity cost perhaps for other industries that we are highlighting in our economic strategy that are impacted there.
Counselor Harper.
Thank you. I'm wondering about sort of enforcement of the files we have in place around the square footage of retail to warehouse space and sort of those definitions, and if that's something that staff feels we need to tighten up or reinforce. Anyway, I felt that the sale of goods stored on property was pretty vague, because that stores, store things on property, and that selling, so if there's some verification on that piece, and if that's considered to be an issue in your mind?
Through you, Chair. I'll take side with this one. So we looked at it, staff did review the retail area of stores. In terms of enforcement, one of you businesses come in that are contemplating a retail component to their industrial use, we do review the floor plan to ensure that it is only 20% of the space. We haven't run into too many issues to date. The retail tends to not be to the same extent as it is in our more traditional commercial centers where we're not seeing the volume, so it wasn't addressed in this update, but it may be in the more comprehensive update.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, if there are any issues like this that, you know, council feels should be addressed, it'd be totally appropriate to recommend that to the more substantive zoning bylaw review. So yeah, all ears for concerns that council may have around that.
Counselor Reese.
Okay, could you go back to, is the overhead of the I-8, I-9? And there's somewhere I saw her.
It's the next slide.
The next slide, okay, we'll get there.
Sorry.
That's one. So, yeah, speaking for myself, I was, I was on council when that I-9 zone was discussed, and so I'm not keen to change that. I think we made a special, a special example of that, or it was a special case, and so I don't want to take that away. It was designed to primarily serve the business park area, I think, with various commercial uses, inevitably with people coming from outside, and I think that was the primary purpose, and so I would leave that. But what I'm just a little uncertain about is the I-8. I just can't recall exactly what is permitted and not permitted in I-8, but if we applied that option two to it, how would that change it? I'm a little worried about unintended consequences for that particular zone.
Through you, Chair. I-8 and I-1 are very similar in terms of permitted uses. The office and the mezzanine, I believe, is the biggest difference, is that we allow slightly more office use as an accessory use in I-8 than we do in I-1.
Is there commercial I-8?
There is no commercial I-8. There's the 20% allowance for accessory, commercial, permanent industrial use, and then the uses are...
It does allow fitness centers.
It allows fitness, but as does I-1, yeah.
So would, you would take the same approach to the I-1, which is, in option two, recognize the existing uses if they are commercial and not permit expansion as a temporary measure?
Then I think I, with Counselor Anderson, is with option two, with the exception of the I-9 zone.
So if I can take an opportunity to answer some questions of my own, can you just speak to me where you think we are philosophically, sort of gathered in the report, that what we generally consider industry tends to be better tax revenue for the district, but lower employment density in general, whereas office, so not commercial retail, but sort of office space where you don't have customers in and out, tends to be a little lower in tax than industrial, but higher employment density, sort of generalizations. Is that accurate? And when we say then business park, where are we sort of as a group on what we think we're after?
Do you want? Yeah, I, in our...
No, I'm sorry.
In our considerations at this point to date, we've taken a bit broader view in terms of, you know, employment density and tax rates. We haven't delved down to quite the level of detail that you were discussing at that point. We were looking a bit more at, you know, light industrial versus the retail, like, I think you were mentioning office space, and in this discussion and contemplation, we weren't really comparing that, we were comparing the light industrial, which we consider to be providing better employment density at higher wages than more retail type activities. That's the comparison that we were focused on. So I don't know that we have an answer to the first part of your question. The second part of your question was...
I think that's...
Okay. I guess I'd start just ask more generally. Sorry, you were saying, where are we at with the industrial park philosophically?
Yeah.
And I did just want to, and I think your question was to council, but just from a standpoint that the, that OCP has some pretty clear language, we really tried to clarify through that process, the direction for the business park in the OCP, and with engagement and contemplation, and it was really, that it was focused on light industrial, that is the primary intent of the areas that aren't specifically designated for commercial, which we know along the highway, and that there were some areas like the I-9 that would serve the day-to-day needs of the business park. But it was pretty clear, clearly articulated there that it was intended to support primarily light industrial.
Mary, do you have a follow-up to that, or?
No, just thinking.
Okay, I'm going to take just one or two more for myself. In some of the consideration is, you know, where else would these industrial businesses go if we give up the space? You might say the same thing about a gym or some of the fitness centers, given what they have. So do we have an answer to that, or any thoughts about that?
That goes back to that, I think, the importance of the economic development, deployment land modeling strategy, but I think off the top, the answer is, we don't actually have a great destination for those uses that are outside of the business park. And so what we're having now is multiple interests competing for that same land because there aren't the options. And so ideally, what we'd like to do is, through that, that modeling exercise, try and get a sense of how much light industrial is really important and needed for our community, because we, I think we need to take action to preserve the land for that purpose, otherwise it could be outcompeted by some of these other, or retail uses. We don't know the downstream consequences of allowing that to happen at this point.
Okay, and then finally, can you just clarify, because you've mentioned restaurant and brewery and a few things, so we have some tasting rooms. In these discussions, is a tasting room a restaurant? Is it, where does that fall, and how tasting rooms be impacted by what we're contemplating here?
So tasting rooms are considered accessory to a brewery use. So when, when food becomes a primary item in a brewery, it then becomes a restaurant and a brewery, so it depends on the intensity of the uses and the seating and the liquor licensing involved. So we didn't get too deep into differentiating tasting rooms, we just sort of are continuing that they're an accessory use to brewery, but then when the restaurant use comes in, we then differentiate it, so.
Mary Lee?
I just wanted to, through the Chair, clarify Counselor Reese's comment. He said he liked option two and excluding I-9. Did staff also recommend excluding I-8? So were you not in favor of excluding I-8 as well or just excluding I-9? I just, I'm trying to figure out.
To clarify that, no. If I understand it correctly, option two, site zones, say specifically zones, existing who would become non-conforming uses, but they're not non-conforming, they could be rebuilt in that site if there was some disaster to it. So it gives the people a long-term security. So that would then apply to I-8. And the only thing that's in I-8 as opposed to I-1 zoning, I understand, is, well, the fitness centers, you said, were in there. So maybe there's restaurants or something like that. Essentially, it's the same as we would be applying to the whole rest of the business park. And so the only real exception to option two would be the I-9 zone. So that's the one that would stay commercial and could be rebuilt as commercial if something burned down. Am I correct in saying that? That would be the effective?
That's correct.
Does that...
Yeah, so staff have given us the option to exclude I-8 or exclude I-9 or exclude both of them from the I-11.
And I was...
And so you're saying just exclude I-9 and I-8 would go into the I-11? Is that clear?
Clarification on that. Does I-9 stay I-9?
Yes.
Yes. There's no changes.
Commercial.
Commercial. My question was, I've now blanked on my question. I'll come back.
Counselor Anderson?
I really appreciate the planning department referring to these other strategies that are part of the picture, the economic development department working on sector strategy and modeling. I'm still not clear whether, because it was not addressed during the employment land strategy exercise of three years ago, and that is the displacement that we might anticipate. And there are numerous truck shots is a very typical type of enterprise that is sitting on land that we've already re-designated in the OCP to something else. And one day I added up 22 acres throughout the municipality of businesses that are sitting on lands where we determined for the long term, in the long term, that that land might be better used for something else. So there's a tremendous amount of displacement that could happen. 22 acres is a lot of land. Now that might take 20 years, but it's something to keep in mind. I would hope that the economic development department exercises taking that into account. I'd like to just finally mention another block of the business park that is one to watch, and that is Ocean West Marine. In fact, at this time, is probably the only marine boat service business operating in the district that's left. And they are sitting on a land that is north of our blue line, if you like, on your chart. But I think we should, it's kind of an illustration. They don't know what their future is. And if they have no future there, I wonder if the marine action strategy will take into account our need for someplace for marine and boat servicing. But I can tell you that they're entirely uncertain about their future there. And for that reason, also for that reason, I'm in favor of option two because it takes into account that zone as well, which is the old Carney's composting facility. So these are other planning exercises, hopefully, that will be part of the picture and will work towards light at the end of the tunnel. And that is the re-action strategy.
Counselor Jim, a specific response? Well, it was just to clarify that because, could you put up the overhead for the option two? My understanding is it wouldn't change that existing use. Option two would not change that particular existing use. It just couldn't turn into a gym or something like that.
That's correct, I guess.
Counselor Harper?
Thank you. I'm in favor of option two with the one modification, although you had a handy prompt up there for me. One modification would be the, would be just excluding, just this modification number two there, excluding the I-9. So that would include the change into the I-8. And I appreciate the BC rail pieces probably have. And with the knowledge that this was always intended to bridge us about a year till we got our whole zoning bylaw amendment updated. So I'm, I think this is a great solution and will definitely get us through that way. But I acknowledge there's a lot more work to be done just because it is a very nuanced discussion. But for the purpose that this is meant to serve, I think this is a great place to work on. So thank you very much.
Mary Lee?
I am happy to support option two. I would exclude I-9. And then I would also add option three, the modification option three, which is not allowing buildings supply outlets and automobile sales in that southern portion of the business park.
Counselor Stone?
I'm also supportive of option two with the exclusion of I-9. I think as Counselor Harper had mentioned, this is meant to be a short-term solution. We knew we weren't going to get it right, but it will give us a bit of breathing room to get through the broader discussion for the zoning bylaw update. I do have a question with regards to the proposal for the BC rail yards. And I'm wondering what, what regulation we have around cannabis production and where it is actually allowed?
All right, through you Chair. So cannabis production is permitted in industrial zones excluding the downtown with some general regulations regarding distancing from residential areas, from other cannabis production facilities and from schools. So in the I-2, there is cannabis production occurring, although technically the parcel is excluded from that, from the buffering provisions that we have in our general regulations. We do have a pre-existing non-conforming use in there, so that use can continue unless it ceases for six months or more. So this is more formally excluded in an official capacity.
So what is the rationale to exclude it from I-2?
If I may, through you. The rationale is that this is one of the last pieces of, a large piece of land that I think we need a better plan for or a specific strategic plan for before determining what is the appropriate zoning on that side because large industrial sites are in such short supply. And cannabis production being a use that is, we see on the rise. You know, this is another, could be a temporary measure while we're working on zoning bylaw to make sure that we have the time to evaluate what is the strategic value of that piece of land before we determine the future uses. Because we are hearing that, you know, cannabis producers are looking for properties and this could be one of those properties. So it just buys us some time to determine what the appropriate use of that land is.
So with that, I'm okay with moving forward with this being a temporary measure. That gives us some time to address that. I don't think it's fair for us to start excluding cannabis production as an industrial use simply because it is a cash crop-heavy industry. I think it brings forward a, it's a new industry that's coming forward. It brings challenges, it upsets the market, but I don't think that's a reason unto itself. So we should start excluding it from industrials.
Counselor Anderson?
Just on that point, I think that it will be very valuable to have that work completed by the economic development department because one of the sectors that's here is manufacturing, wood manufacturing. And the unique thing about that yard that you can't duplicate everywhere else is that people can work together delivering stuff to each other by forklift. And what is happening is that that is what is no longer, we're not no longer able to do because businesses that delivered and received goods by forklift are being chased out altogether. So there isn't the cluster opportunity. And this is something that I will agree with Counselor Stone, we need to evaluate, but I think it's important to evaluate. Right now, we have two anchor businesses in those yards, Combustion Solutions and Fraserwood Industries, and they're providing services to a number of firms around them. It's the firms around them that are being displaced and the opportunity of those clusters is being, is an opportunity lost.
Mary Lee?
I support the I-2 restrictions. I think that piece of land is absolutely strategic because of the rail yards, the connection to the port. And cannabis industry does not need a bulk break port to ship their product. But other industries do, or other industries need to receive supplies through that port. So I think there's other spaces for cannabis to go, including the business park. And I would like to keep it out of this zone in the short term and possibly longer. I'm happy with these changes.
Counselor Reese, then I'll take some comments. Well, just going forward, I'm just wondering, is staff looking for a resolution with respect to this? Or are you making extensive notes? How would you like to go forward with this?
We're, through you Chair, I'm feeling like I'm getting notes to have a sense of what's going on. If council wants to make a resolution, would that be appropriate or?
There's a resolution on here. Yeah. If council wants to indicate the individual changes that are different than what's been proposed, then it should go in a resolution.
Hang on, let me find the resolution. Sorry, it wasn't on the first page.
Tell me, you should come here, Sandra.
Yeah, but that doesn't get specific. That was the one I was looking at. So we're looking for something a little bit more specific than that. Because it doesn't, for example, say which option.
It would be great if you had clarity. I think what I'm hearing is most people are on board with option two with I-9 exclusion. The only thing that has been mentioned is the automobile sales and supply building in the southern part that I think we would need clarity when we come back whether that should be in or out.
Can I just add a couple comments here and see if someone will see a resolution? So I guess, and I apologize just in trying to, Chair, it's hard to keep straight between option one and two. I think I've been leaning actually more towards option one with the thought that it is a temporary interim thing. And I gather that option two, we are sort of permanently spot zoning like forevermore, these businesses can continue on in that use. So just while we're figuring things out, I tend to more towards the first option myself. Again, as a, as a short-term stopgap. The other piece on the industrial is a short-term thing. I'd be fine to exclude cannabis production uses. I wonder though about at this point relaxing the height restriction. As I understand, it's a relaxation of that. We've adjusted our tax rate. We're talking about relaxing height restrictions, but we're also waiting for a more comprehensive zoning bylaw update. So I'm just a little bit concerned that we may well incentivize a business we don't want in there. And I just feel a lot more comfortable that if we're clear on this is what we want in there before we relax too many of the restrictions. Is my thoughts on this one?
Mary Lee?
Do you have a question as to why staff have increased that height?
Sounds great. Good question.
If I may, then I'll tackle it. The reason behind it is that there, usually you want to control height around, you know, residential areas where it might impact people's views or other uses such as near port. In this case, most of the site is far away from residential uses. There is a farm station reserve, a piece of property inside that land, which we would want to be sensitive to because there are residents in there. But otherwise, there's no other reason. So it just makes it possible for a larger amount of industrial users to move into the site. And I think as we're heading into the zoning bylaw update, it's something that we're going to be looking across the business park, whether we should increase the height because of the lack of reasons why not.
And I guess just what I was thinking is in terms of our strategic plan and the economic development plan we've gotten, you know, I'd be a bit more comfortable keeping things constrained for heavy industry until we sort of, in other ways, articulate what we want in those zones rather than just sort of open it up. And, you know, we could very well end up with the business that doesn't work with that strategic plan, that economic development plan, it seems, if we make it too easy. So I would tend to do it the other way around, is sort of the zoning bylaw more comprehensively and if that advises it, then reduce the height restrictions. That's just me. Mary Lee?
So can we test consensus then on each part of this, just to try and wrap up? Because we have a special business meeting at four.
Oh, we do. Okay. Yeah, so I think option two, show of hands, I think that's where it seemed like consensus was. Just sort of testing, not...
We'll go through the exclusions.
Okay, so option two to start with.
Okay, so we're gonna have chicken dinner on that one. So exclusions, excluding I-8?
There's modification two. That's the one everybody discussed.
Just doing one at a time. So I-8, do you want to exclude that? No, I-9? What was it? Car and, we'll start with car sales.
That is modification, this one?
Modification one.
What is that? Commercial?
Industrial.
Roughly.
Is there support for that? Three, four, five?
I'm hung up on the definition of building supply outlet because it is quite a broad category and certainly sympathetic to automobile sales.
Okay.
If I could provide, we have a definition in the zoning bylaw of the building supply outlet. And it essentially defines it as those suppliers that provide it to sell home improvement items essentially. So it is, it seems to be fairly narrow, concentrated on, you know, home depots.
Right.
Bromes.
So, and then I guess we're cannabis use excluded from the I-2. Something like that, supported. Removal of the height restriction in I-2. Okay, support for that.
Just to clarify, on this one, so the council is feeling or consensus was to exclude automobile-oriented commercial, correct? And building supply outlet also excluded?
In that southern?
In the southern, yeah.
As stated there.
So is there anything else then that's bothering someone that we wanted to, Counselor Stone?
If you just want to play on the I-8 portion, and this is specifically detailed to a business that's in there that I think is already standing as a climbing gym. Just perhaps the staff have a conversation with the climbing gym, whether that expansion has occurred or not, to make sure that we aren't pitching for them, given that in previous development of the I-8 something was really to start encouraging that level, like that type of gym?
Through the Chair, just to address that, the climbing gym is considered indoor recreation and not fitness center. So the intention would be to allow that to continue because that use specifically does need an over-height warehouse and it is traditionally included in most industrial parks as there's space to trinket in normal grocery centers. It's not appropriate for it.
Thanks for the clarification.
Mary Lee?
So can we put forward the motion then that the community will receive the report from community planning? And with the feedback as follows, you saw the show of hands, so option two, exclude I-9, include the modification to exclude automobile and building supply sub-industrial or-ish, and accept the changes in I-2?
And I-2?
And I-2. I'm prepared the zoning bylaw amendment in line with that feedback.
Then include I-8?
Include I-8, exclude I-8.
No, leaving I, it would be part of option two.
Right, yes.
Yeah. So that's the motion I'll put forward.
Counselor Stone, for seconds. Any more discussion? I see none. All those in favor, opposed, and here's...
Thank God. Very glad.
Counselor, are you, you determine the motion?
You have to terminate.
Oh, okay. Motion to terminate. Counselor Reese, second to five, Counselor French, all those in favor. Motion carries.
All right. So is that a special business meeting? Welcome to special business meeting for Tuesday, April 23rd. House of Commons, Cleveland, Cleveland, Ohio. We meet always on the territorial territory's conversation. Motion to adopt the agenda, move by. Counselor Reese, second to five, Counselor French, all those in favor. Motion carries. So there was a little bit of a glitch. So a little bit of miscommunication. So we're here to rescind and reconsider the reading of the District of Squamish Land Development Procedures bylaw, number 2632, 2018. And I'll have staff explain a little bit what that glitch was.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Counsel. My name is Sarah McJanet. Last week, as the mayor pointed out, council gave first three readings to land development procedures bylaw 2632, as well as to a companion fees and charges amendment bylaw 2665. We are re-presenting the procedural bylaw today because we did catch a couple items on the fly that need correction. I extend apologies for missing these on the first round. Staff got a few wires crossed. So today, we're recommending that council rescind third reading of the land development procedures bylaw 2632, and that it be given three readings today as amended. So I just have one slide that highlights the three corrections that we've made to bylaw 2632. Number one, we are adding the delegation to the Director of Engineering for Execution and Works and Services Agreements. This delegation was part of the officer and delegation bylaw that Robin presented last Tuesday, and that was given three readings. Unfortunately, staff missed adding this component into the land development procedures bylaw. So we're correcting that. Correction two, we have fixed an error and omission in Schedule A, which outlines delegation of minor development permits for form and character. The bylaw had previously noted development permit areas four through thirteen, and that missed inclusion of development permit area three, which is the universal development permit area. So we've corrected this in Schedule A of bylaw 2632. Finally, number three, we've made a minor clarification in section 3.3 of the bylaw that the Director of Community Planning may prescribe application forms for specifically bylaw amendments and permit applications only. And this, and not subdivision and applications for subdivision or strata conversions. So this latter authority rests with our approving officer. So we wanted to make that minor clarification in the bylaw. Again, that the Director of Community Planning may prescribe forms for bylaw amendments and permit applications only. So those are the three edits that we've made to bylaw 2632. Counsel has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And then we, the recommendation and the motion is that council rescind third reading of District of Squamish Land Development Procedures bylaw 2632, that was originally given April 16th, 2019. So Ms. Arthur says that we just amend, put that original date in to the first motion. And secondly, that District of Squamish Land Development Procedures bylaw, do I have these twice? Oh, rescind and then give it three readings as amended.
Any questions? Counselor Ben Gill?
I was gonna move it.
Any questions? Everyone do it, all right? Move by Counselor Ben Gill, second to five, Counselor Stone. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for continuing. Motion to terminate. Move by Counselor Reese, second to five, Counselor Stone. All those in favor? All those in favor carries. Thanks, everyone.